Something different?
Uh, no beard.
No beard, no glasses, no mask. You just don't know what he looks like anymore.
Good evening, good folks, and welcome to this City of Muskegon City Commission Work Session for this Monday, April 10th. May we have call to order, a roll call please. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor German, absent. Commissioner Gorman?
Here.
Commissioner Emery?
Here.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Ramsey?
Here.
All right, so we're gonna have a little bit of rearrangement of our agenda ordering. As you may see, the animal ordinance with regard to chickens is the first item. We're gonna move that down a bit, because we do have some presentations and proposals that we'll be reviewing, as well as several guests related to that. So we're going to, out of respect for our guests and their time, we're gonna move things around a little bit. And so we're gonna move up the expungement clinics, consideration of the proposals for expungement clinics to the top, and that's gonna be followed by our Muskegon Social Equity Program allocation of education funds, and then we'll get on to the marijuana excess tax revenue allocations, followed by our ARPA Community Grant Program update, and then finally, the Parkland Marina Development Agreement Amendment. And so first up then, expungement clinics. And we're gonna have our planning director, Mike Franzick, leading out on several of these items. He's gonna kick us off with the first one on the expungement clinics.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we had three proposals to our request proposal for the expungement clinics. Staff Ventures, they are already planning an event at the Frauenthal on September 23rd, but they are still seeking funding. Their proposal came in at forty-nine thousand two hundred and five. Canis Capital proposed a one-time expungement clinic, fifty thousand three hundred and sixty, and a three-time expungement series for a hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and ninety. And the Guns Organization offered a one-time clinic for two thousand dollars and a three times for five thousand five hundred. And we do have, I believe, all of the applicants here that sent in proposals, if you have any questions.
Okay. Would you like to provide a synopsis of each proposal? Would you rather have each submitter speak on their proposal?
Yeah, I think it might be better.
Or would you want to report out, and then any additional questions we can pose to the submitter?
I think it'd be better to have a quick little presentation from the organizations, have some follow-up questions. They're all pretty similar in terms of expertise and the services they can provide, so.
Okay, well, we'll just take it in the order that's in the agenda. And so first up, we have Canis Capital Foundation and Minorities for Medical Marijuana. Do we have a representative with this application here presently?
No, Simone was going to be in attendance. Doesn't look like she's here yet.
Okay, we will hold her for later then. I ran into her last Thursday at a ribbon-cutting event, and she said she'd be here, so then we will go to the next in order, and that is the Stash Ventures Expungement Resource Fair. Welcome. If you could introduce yourself and your organization, yep.
Hi, my name is Karen Kekelik. I am one of the owners of Indigro. We're partnering with Stash Ventures to help put on the expungement clinic this September. Our goal is to fully expunge fifty to seventy-five records. With the proposal, like Mike said, it's around fifty thousand. Stash Ventures has already committed to providing twenty thousand of that, and then we also have some other people who want to fund as well. Any questions I can answer about the event?
Would you wanna maybe delve into just the broad overview of how you anticipate your event operating, and who would be serving, and what kind of services? I know we've had a chance to review it in our packet.
Yeah.
Folks at home may not have, or in the room may not have had a chance to review it, so if you don't mind, just kind of broadly, broad overview of your proposal?
Yeah, so we wanna help expunge marijuana-related offenses or non-marijuana-related offenses. The folks will pre-register for this event, that way we're able to pull some records and things, do some of the work beforehand. We should be able to spend ten to thirty minutes with each person, walk them through the next steps, provide them with envelopes, stamped envelopes to mail in the rest of their documents, and then Great Lakes Expungement Network is working with us as well. They're gonna be taking over all the cases that need further court dates and that sort of thing, following through with them to ensure that they're not pulling, and that we can help everyone, you know, as much as we can.
So you're gonna be walking each potential applicant throughout the process, regardless of whether it's cannabis-related or otherwise. And then, in your proposal, an RFP that we published, was the expectation that any of our city residents would, all the costs would be defrayed, so they would not have to pay any fees for the process from fingerprinting. And I see you highlighted a lot of that, probably, but just wanted to double-check on that.
Yes, yeah.
And confirm that that's your expectation with this proposal, that you're gonna be serving not just city residents, but for those that are city residents, the cost of fingerprinting and background checks and any application fee to the Michigan State Police, that would be all covered?
Correct, yes. It would be completely fee-free, anyone who participates in the...
Okay, and that's anticipated as part of the cost that you've submitted with your application?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Kekelik with regard to their submission or proposal? Do you wanna speak to, I know you mentioned a couple of them already, but do you wanna speak to the other partners that you're working with on this?
Yeah, so Stash Ventures is the main partner, also working with the Redemption Foundation, I-Minded, Timber, like I said, Glenn, the Great Lakes Expungement Network, the Michael Thompson Clemency Project is also involved, as well as Hoynman Law Firm, and Higher Hope's Foundation is involved as well.
Mm-hmm.
Already official sponsors, but like I said, we've spoken with some others who may wanna fund as well.
Okay, excellent. And so if you were to get, hypothetically, you were to get the full allocation from the city, and you got additional resources coming in from other third parties and potential partners, what would you do if you had excess resources?
So our goal is for all the excess to go to the Great Lakes Expungement Network to ensure that they can follow through on all the expungements as far as possible. So that usually costs five hundred dollars per expungement through Great Lakes Expungement Network. And yeah, if we had any funds left over after that, some other things that we're looking to provide are like maybe childcare for the day of, if people have children and they need someone to watch the child while they're working with them, that sort of thing, maybe a light lunch for the folks that come in.
Yeah, it was nice to see that childcare and potential for transportation if needed, and some of the wraparound services and support services, because it's not just about getting records expunged, but also how do we help those people now, unburdened by this, you know, find that additional support or those jobs?
Exactly.
Additional resources beyond that, so. All right, well, thank you so much for your proposal, but before you go anywhere, Commissioner Ramsey?
Yes, just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am scanning the document again, and I'm looking for, have you guys chosen a spot to have, to actually host the event yet?
Yes, we're gonna host it at the Frauenthal.
That's right.
Yes, we have looked at, our original plan was the farmer's market, but it wasn't available on that day. We wanted to have something downtown, close to the bus stop, that way people could easily access it.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Ramsey?
I am looking in the budget for the, someone point me to it, for the cost of the space itself to rent, are they donating?
No, I think it was like around four hundred dollars down payment.
That's okay, we don't have to find it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I can definitely get you that information.
And that's in the Hilt Building side, not in the Frauenthal Theater itself, but...
Yes, yeah, you're correct, it's in the Hilt Building. Event space, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I found it. Perfect.
Commissioners, any other questions with regard to this proposal? No? Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us right now?
No, I'm just really excited for this event and to help out Muskegon area residents.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the work you're doing and your interest and efforts and your proposal.
All right, thank you for your time.
Next up, we have a proposal from Guns, which is gaining unity through non-violent solutions. And is this Ms. Janet Robinson going to be presenting?
Yes, and I have another gentleman who's on his way. Two minutes out, but I can start the presentation. I wanted to share with you guys, leave this literature for each one of you, to tell what Guns is, which is gaining unity through non-violent solutions. We are a reduced gun violence initiative program that was co-founded by myself and Dr. Smith and Chief Thomas from Muskegon High Police Department. We've been around since 2018, and we try to find ways that we can help in the community that's non-violent, basically, solution, which gives us a way of ways we can help. And one of the ways we wanna help is with the expungement fair. And I kinda feel kinda bad when I hear the cost that's associated with the other programs, but I guess we bring some expertise that the other programs may not have. I've been doing expungement fairs for a while, and the gentleman that's coming to work with me, he's the setup, expungement fairs, Safe &amp; Just, Michigan. We've been doing expungement fairs for a while, and with our expungement fairs, we know all the particulars that go into it. We know the one-stop shop. We know that you can stop in, and the biggest cost I think a lot of people were experiencing, they had problems with fingerprint, they couldn't get fingerprint text. That was one of the biggest things I heard around the Muskegon County area, they couldn't get fingerprint text. But I'm gonna go read, so you'll have the same particulars that you asked the previous for. The services that we'll provide, like I said, gaining through unity, through non-violent solutions, co-founder myself and Dr. Smith, we have experience in the criminal justice system, because I actually have, I do work with the state police, but I currently have been a part of the expungement fairs in the Clean Slate Project for a few years now, as well as Mr. Kamaya, he'll be here in a minute, he's an attorney who worked with Safe &amp; Just, and he has set up expungement fairs. And we've done expungement fairs all around, not just in Muskegon County, we've done them in Grand Rapids, we've done them in Detroit, we have done them all over Michigan where they're offered. And the services that we provide with that is we do fingerprints, the background checks, which is iChats, attorneys there to aid to fill out the paperwork for the applicants. We provide refreshments, waters, and chips for those that's coming in for a long day. And we've had some actual expungement fairs where people have brought their kids with them, and we've been able to, you know, help with that, because sometimes you have vendors there that can do different things to help offset some of the time that goes into it. We also provide lunch for the volunteers, that's always been a nice courtesy, because attorneys are donating their time, but it's always been nice to provide a lunch, because those are long days, and we may go from nine to three. So those are long days for you to be there and just not ate. So it's been nice to provide that avenue where we can have a lunch. And one of the things that I believe in is community, so that helps, because we can actually bring somebody from the community to actually do that catering. So now you're helping your community in more ways than one. The additional services that we can provide can be as fifty-dollar money orders for each of the clients. I know in your proposal, you said you wanted to make sure that your Muskegans didn't have any cost, if so, but other counties, well, not other residents outside of Muskegon, you wanted to provide the service to them, but you wouldn't necessarily take care of all the cost for them. But the applications are fifty dollars per application, so it was hard for me to tell one number, because one person may have five different courts, and if that's the case, that's fifty dollars per court, it's not fifty dollars. But in the scenario that I listed, I do tell you how many people it can service, and I'll continue down. Another service that you can provide, sometimes it's nice is stamps and envelopes, you know, sometimes we send them out the door with the envelopes, or we send them out the door with the applications they filled out, but then they don't get them from point A to point B or to point C to even get them processed. So the steps applicants need to complete on their own or off-site, we do pre-registration. So if you do a pre-registration, you can actually get your iChats pulled prior to you getting there, and iChats are ten dollars per iChat. But if you don't pre-register, we have had, well, we've had some handling with the walk-ins, but it's easier when you have the pre-register, because you can have two separate lines, so to speak, where you have that pre-register, those iChats already pulled, you have somebody else working over here, or those that's walk-in, so you can accommodate more people. So that's always nice. The cost of iChats, as I said, is ten dollars. Applicants pull their own, that's a cost that they have to bear on their own. If they pre-register, that's not something they have to pay, it's part of the actual clinic. The list of items that's needed, you use basically two laptops, two printers to print out the information, so that they can go home with the records. The service will be coordinated by our group, we will coordinate those services, so that's not something that somebody else would have to do. One of the things that would be nice is getting the courts on site. We have some, well, we have the courts on site, where the courts are actually there, so they can go get the certified records from the actual courts, which is additional cost, sometimes ten to fifteen dollars. You can come up, I don't have to stand alone.
Sorry, I'm late, everyone.
If you'd like to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Kamau Sandoval, I'm the Clean Slate Program Manager at Safe &amp; Just, Michigan, and I'm Assistant Miss Robinson in the group.
All right. You helped with the expungement fair at the Muskegon Farmer's Market in October of 2021, is that correct?
Yes.
I recall seeing this, I thought so. You were so helpful then, there was such an overwhelming demand and not enough attorneys at the time, but you were there, you were a trooper. I'm sorry to digress on here, but that ended up going until, I think we got out of there at eleven-thirty, almost midnight, and you were a trooper throughout the whole thing. It was supposed to be like five to seven, and you stayed till the end to help everyone that was there. And I just want to thank you for your work on that clinic and making yourself available and helping your community there. So I'm sorry to digress.
I trained you well.
Thank you for having me.
And so, one of the things I was saying, if we can get the courts on site, that has always been a help, because we need to get certified records. That's another step that if we don't do at the actual expungement, and we send them out to the courts, sometimes that kinda lacks, or sometimes there's a ten to fifteen dollar fee, and sometimes the clients don't have that. So that's something additional that can be added into it. When I did the scenarios, I did a scenario for one clinic, and I did a scenario for three clinics, and I gave you proposal dates of June or July for the, if we did one, or if we did two, we can do one September, October, or something in March for the third one. Far as the quote, as he said before, for the first one, it was two thousand because of those expenses, and then for, if we did three, it was five thousand. If you look down in the paperwork, I also said, when I talked about fifty dollars per person, I said if you have fifty applicants, that's twenty-five hundred dollars. If you have a hundred applicants, that's five thousand, and that's based on the fact that they're fifty dollars per court, so you can't just say, I can send this one individual out with fifty-dollar money order and have it taken care of, because they may have multiple. But that's basically, us in a nutshell, what we can actually provide.
Commissioners, questions with regard to this proposal?
She went through it all.
You trained me well.
Thank you.
Sorry, we rearranged the schedule on you a little bit, too.
Yeah, for sure.
So we moved it up earlier in the meeting to cover this. Commissioner Ramsey?
Do you have a question? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, same question. So I know that the presentation before was for an event that's already planned, and yours is yet to be planned, and so I understand that. What type of venue are you looking at when you're doing an event like this, especially for us here in Muskegon?
Well, we've, like he said, we've done different ones. We've done them at faith-based churches, we've done, like he mentioned, at like the farmer's market, but we got different venues that we can look at. That's why I gave the range of three fifty to five hundred dollars, as far as the pricing of actually securing those venues.
Great, thank you.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Ramsey?
No, sir, no.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Okay. Anyone down here, any questions? Any questions? All right, so, um, can you help me understand, because of the three proposals, you have the lowest cost by far, and so does that cost encaps, does that include the extent of the resources that the city intends to provide to support defraying the full cost of the expungement process? Do you have everything lined up, that you've got volunteers here or extra resources here, that you just don't need as much financial or resource support from the city to cover all of those costs for our city residents to walk through the expungement process?
That's why, if you notice, what I did was, I broke it down. I did not include with the two and the five, I did not put the twenty-five hundred dollars, if you add that to the cost of your clinic, so now you're at four. As far as volunteers on there, I had put on here that we can hire people to assist in that, to make that go smoother, whether that's somebody directing traffic outside, whether that's somebody saying, hey, start here, have a seat here, we do this. I had put that cost in there for individuals as well. That's where the three hundred and seventy-five dollars came in, that we can utilize that.
Okay, so you're talking about if we were to do one clinic, you know, work with you on one clinic, you'd need two thousand dollars to sponsor that clinic, but then potentially up to another five thousand dollars in resources for defraying of those costs for the applications?
That, as well as, yes, the process, as far as completing the whole process, sending them into the court, the stamps, the envelope, all that.
Okay, excellent. Well, thanks. Do you have anything additional you wish to add?
I know, I think Ms. Robinson touched on...
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening and the work that you're doing and your proposal.
Thanks.
All right. Ms. Kaison? Simone? Kaison. So this is with regard to the expungement clinic proposal from Canis Capital Foundation and Minorities for Medical Marijuana. Our apologies, we moved this up to the beginning of our meeting.
Oh, that's okay, I was on time. I barely went, but I was on time.
So welcome.
Hello, everyone, how's everybody doing? Thank you so much for having me. Are we gonna pop it up? So I'm just gonna, do I have to say my name and...
You can share your name and the organization that you are with.
Okay, so my name is Simone Kaison. I'm with Canis Capital Insurance Firm. I actually own the insurance firm that's based here in Muskegon on Getty Street, and in addition to that, I also have a foundation. When I first started out here, I was the state chapter president for Minorities for Medical Marijuana, and I also sat on the board for the social equity work group for the state of Michigan. Twelve, we created twelve social equity initiative programs. My group actually came up with five of them. Right now, I believe that there are three in session, and my group came up with all of them, so if you have heard about the All-Star Program, that one was mine. In addition to that, there is another, the micro-business Class A, that was mine, that was our group, and then there are a couple of other ones that they will be reintroducing to the program, so that all came from our group, which was the Access to Capital. In addition to that, Minorities for Medical Marijuana has to date expunged over four hundred people. So this is not something that we are new in the game. We have done expungement events in, I believe, at this point, sixteen states, and so that's why we think we are really good at putting our hat in the ring for this. All right, so I guess we can get started. As it stands right now, our organization, my organization started in 2018, where I'm the CEO, and our mission with, along with Canis Capital and Minorities for Medical Marijuana, is to help bridge the gap via social equity, social economics, social entrepreneurship, and social justice. So a couple of things that we thought would be really, really great for our expungement is how do we attack the war on drugs? And we know that the war on drugs started in 1971. I'm not gonna bore you with the whole story, I'm sure we've heard it over and over and over again, but it has become one of the serious things that have held back a lot of our people. And especially, we know that there are three to three-point-five times more of black and brown people to be attacked by things that have the war on drugs. But in addition to that, they are also three to five more times to be held back or being acclimated back into society. And now that our great state of Michigan is having a great time in taxes, wouldn't this be a great thing for us to help them get, not only expunged, but help them become great citizens that we can produce and we can say that they are not just Michiganders, but Muskegonites? So, that's what we wanna do. Not only do we wanna help them get expunged, but we also wanna help them with our wraparound services. So, of course, we have our expungement prices, and you can look at the budget that we have here, and that's everything that we have. We really wanted to make sure that our expungement event was very, very, very inclusive. One of the things that I have seen with expungement events, people that have felonies or misdemeanors already feel ousted. So even with an expungement event, if it's not inclusive, that becomes even worse, and you gotta remember, they're not really that keen of going with the police or the government or anything like that. So we found that not only, there are some things that we can do to make people come and come and feel comfortable. One of the things that's really important is we want all of our advertisements, all of our advertisements to be bilingual, so they should be in both English and Spanish. That's very, very important, because not only do black people are three to five, but also are brown people. In addition to that, we would love to be able to take on some of our radio, because it is a nonprofit event, most of the time, the radio will allow us to do it for free or for a very, very low cost, so that's really, really important. In addition to that, we want to use local attorneys, so we reached out to Attorney Oakes, and he put us in contact with Attorney Brent and a couple of other ones. They all have... They all have, um, said that they would definitely love to help and they will be able to come in for short times. Um, we, as far as our computers, we're looking to reach out to the community college and let them, um, loan us some, some of the computers so that we'll be able to do it. And then, let's look at our wraparound services. So we thought it was really, really important for us not only to take them all the way through the process, and I'll go back to that, what that looks like, but to be able to provide them some wraparound services. And I thought it was so cool that when I reached out to these organizations, they were so on board on how, as I said before, not to just have them get expunged, right? And we'll talk about what that looks like, because it's different in every state, but we'll go back to that. But looking at, um, West Michigan Works wanted to come in, and they've been a part of, uh, expungements for a lot of different organizations. Shoreline Staffing wanted to come in, and they would, and they would talk about, what, uh, West Michigan Works would talk about employment and job, um, opportunities. Shoreline Staffing would teach them how to actually have an interview. Uh, the Women's Democratic Party wanted to come on site and actually, um, have them register to vote. Lot of, lot of felons don't know that in the state of Michigan, you can still vote. Uh, the Muskegon Veterans, they were gonna come in and let them know that there are still opportunities if you are honorably or dishonorably discharged. Uh, the LGBT, uh, Blue House wanted to come in and let them know what they should be looking, what landlords look for, even if you have a felony. A lot of people don't know that you can still rent an apartment. And then, of course, we wanted to have two Hispanic interpreters. Very, very important. So our, our job and what we thought was, how do we make this as inclusive as possible? Another hurdle that actually goes on in, in expungement is, a lot of people, not everybody qualifies. Not everybody qualifies, and that's different for every state. So making sure that in some of the marketing material, that there are kind of the matrix. And I believe in Michigan, what is, it's two and, it's two and one. So I think you have two misdemeanors, one felony, it's a mix, two misdemeanors and a felony. So, you know, not everybody qualifies, and making sure that that's explained. Um, 'cause I've gone to expulsion, not mine, I've gone to expulsion events where people were very, very angry, 'cause they had a rap sheet this long, and then it was like, oh, you can't do it. Well, you should've said that before I came out, so that's another issue. So making sure that it's kind of explained, um, what it is, right? And that's a big, big deal. So, making it inclusive, making it definitely bilingual, that's a big, big point. The wraparound services, and, oh, and then our person, which is Lakeisha Camus. She's our attorney, and she's been doing this for a very, very long time. Um, she travels all around the United States doing it. And she keeps a database, and that database is what we hold. And she, her and her team follow the individuals that we collect the information from A to Z to make sure that they go all the way through the process. So they don't just start them from there, and it's all computer-generated. That's it. I don't got nothing else for you.
Thank you.
Oh, and the place at the conference center, we've already got approval from there, and they will give us-
Which conference center is that?
That one, they keep changing the name. What is the place? The, um, it was the arena, now it's the hackley, what, what was it when it first came here? Now they changed it again. What is it?
The Van Dyke.
Yeah.
Convention Center?
The Convention Center, but it was something else before.
Are you talking about the arena itself?
No, the Van Dyke Convention Center, but it was something else before. You know what I'm talking about.
It was the Muskegon Lakeshore Convention Center originally, I think.
I don't remember.
Yeah, that is its first official sponsored name.
Right, with the different, right, so now-
Yeah, with the breakout rooms and whatnot.
Yeah, mhm, so they definitely-
You have that space lined up, you have a date then?
I, I have a, well, so, look, they are really nice. When I told them it was a expungement event, they were so, so happy. His nickname's Lawrence, he's a really nice guy. And so he gave me a couple of Saturdays, and he said, he would, he would be so excited to host something like that for the city of Muskegon. And he said, the month of June, they don't have a lot going, going on for that room. The weddings are going in another room. So, he said, he would be flexible.
Okay, okay, gosh. Like, yeah, I think what you're talking about, some of what the hotel used to be called, and it's, it's conference rooms. That's maybe what you're thinking of, prior names. Because, yeah, there's the, the Delta by Marriott, and they've got their conference room.
No, not the Delta.
And that's connected to the convention center.
Okay, what's the convention center that's, um?
Are you talking about the Shoreline Convention Center on the lake?
No. Okay, go to the Walker Arena.
Okay, it's right next door, the convention center.
Yeah, what is that called?
That's the Van Dyke Convention Center, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But it's connected to the Delta by Marriott. They also have additional conference rooms at the Delta by Marriott.
That's where, yeah, that's who told me. Yeah, that's the one.
And it's, yeah, it's handled by Parkman Properties.
Yeah, there you go. And they were really nice. Lawrence asked for him, he's a really great guy.
All right. Excellent. Uh, Commissioners?
Questions?
Questions for Ms. Simone?
I have a question, but it's not for Ms. Simone.
Yes, Commissioner Ramsey.
Was there an issue in the packet and that her budget is separated from her descriptor by several pages? Because there is a grant proposal budget that shows up at the end?
Yes. So Commissioners, that budget that's at the end of this item is for the first proposal.
Which is?
So, good, good calling out on that, but that is, uh, you wanna pull up the budget, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind?
It's on page, uh, it starts on page forty-six. I am a liar forty-eight.
I know, I noticed that. I was like, wait, what? And I double-checked the numbers, like, those look like the numbers from the first proposal listed.
And then I was like, oh, maybe there's another without, anyway.
Yes.
Wasn't a question for you, it was messed up in our thing.
It's not on, and on your part, there was some documents separated.
So can I tell you what happened? I came in on the fourteen, before the fourteenth, and dropped my original one off, 'cause I was trying to be a good kid. And then they told me that it was on the twenty-eighth. Well, then I realized that I didn't get copied off the-
Oh, that wasn't included in the original submission?
And so, I came in, and I was like, can I slip? And she was like, ah, 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 but you can do an addendum. And so that's when she did it, and she stapled it together.
Okay, gotcha. But yes, this budget that's at the end of that item in the packet is for the first, uh, proposal. In the packet for that agenda item, yes. Any questions for Ms. Simone?
Yeah.
Commissioner Emery?
Can you define wraparound services? What all does that include?
So the wraparound services was everything that we listed. So, outside of just expungement, right? So the expungement is going to be taking them from their fingerprints, pulling their, their, uh, felony charges, whatever their charges are, going in with the attorney, getting to the state, and then going in and whatever it take, consists of to remove. So that's the actual clinic, right? So the wraparound services will be anything that is an additional that helps them be, become acclimated or makes them stronger as a citizen. So workforce development, how to fill out an application for rent, how to fill out an interview app, um, app, how to interview properly, how to, um, vote. So many, do you know how many people in our community are not registered to vote? And they think that they don't have the right to vote because they've, um, served time? Do you know how many people in our community do not live, they live with someone else simply because they think that they don't have the right to, um, to fill out an application, they're gonna be automatically denied? And then, also, our, um, our LGBT community, a lot of them have a lot of retail theft. And they feel like they don't, that they shouldn't come in, that they don't feel comfortable. So.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mhm.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Emery?
No.
Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, um. So are you actively, so you sound like you've already been moving this forward in terms of, um, identifying a space. Are you, and you have a couple of partners listed, are you actively pursuing additional partners or sponsors to further defray the cost?
Oh, no, I stopped there. I just wanted to know, I wanted to get a pulse. So I stopped after that, you know? But I did need to know a pulse and figure out about how much it was gonna cost.
Okay. So in the event that the city, you know, maybe wants to help you and support your partner, but isn't gonna necessarily, um, provide the full amount, you know, fifty thousand dollars, just speaking hypothetically here.
Round numbers.
Um. Would you still pursue this and try to line up any, any outstanding, any resources to, to, um?
I mean, we probably could, um, that would probably be doable, um, for a, a large one. I, I would probably say with the pulse of what's going on right now, I'm sure, think about it, that with the city of Muskegon, I'm sure quite a few of your dispensaries would probably wanna help out. I think they would. So, so I, I think you can get some of your dispensaries and some of the other, um, people in the, um, area to, to.
Okay. And we do have a, a proposal, um, from a consortium of dispensaries, um, that we're considering. But there are still several more out there that you could-
Yeah, 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 no.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that they, you know, that I'm sure there's quite a few that would.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, any final questions for Ms. Simone?
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks so much for joining us tonight and submitting and pursuing this.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Director Franzick? So do you have anything to, to share with the Commissioners as we consider, you know, which of these proposals to find? Or, you know, just try to support all of them, or, um, do you have any insights or, or context you wish to share with us as we pursue our consideration and deliberation?
I think we may have a few options of what we wanna do here. Um, you know, the Stash Ventures, they're, they're already putting one on, they're still looking for funding. You know, maybe that's an option to help assist with that. Um, if we're looking, um, on the expense side, obviously guns comes in a lot cheaper than everyone else. And they do have a lot of experience, so I am, uh, intrigued by that. And Ms. Kason's group as well, they have a lot of experience too. And I do like the wraparound services that they offer as well, so. You know, my thoughts, maybe guns and Ms. Kason and, and then Stash would probably be, just from me looking at it, um, probably what I would recommend.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, we have three great proposals, three great teams.
I think they're all-
A variety of experiences, and, um, I do like that, um, the focus on, um, the Stash Venture and Ms. Kason on the wraparound services. We do have some of that as well with the, the Guns Initiative. Um, but I saw it more fleshed out, um, with Stash Ventures and, and, um, Ms. Kason, which I really liked and welcomed, but it seems like three great proposals altogether, but Commissioner Hood?
Question, um. Do we also have a choice in, um, maybe combining the services of all three?
Like asking two or three to work together?
Right.
Uh, that, we could, I mean, ultimately it would be up to the individual, uh, submitters and organizers, whether or not they, you know, want to, to pool it together and, and do it all in concert with one another, and do several together, or maybe it's each doing one, and then we revisit this, you know, after they're all done a year from now, or whenever that may be, and, um, have uh, an assessment and tracking metrics and seeing, uh, who has some of the best success rates. Um, and then perhaps continue partnering with them beyond, you know, give additional resources. But yeah, there's a number of different ways we could, we could go with that. Commissioner Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see thoughts on your mind. I don't see your red pen, but I see thoughts on your mind.
And I was like, wow, I don't wanna hold it the whole time. Um, so I do have some thoughts, surprise, surprise. Uh, these are three great proposals, because, uh, Stash already has their, um, event planned. I think that it would be great for us to go in and do some partnership with them, and then maybe we set up with Guns, being the leader in the second event, to catch the overflow, only because something is not planned yet, so not necessarily the overflow, Mr. Franzick. But, so we did this a couple of years back, before we did the one in the fall that you're talking about. Um, Out of Michigan Works through the Community Health Innovation Region, and we had droves of people show up. And so we know that there's going to be a lot of people there, right? How do we schedule a second event on our dime with Guns and the partnership of, um, you guys have messed me up with having these things so far apart, and the partnership of our first presenter, who was our third presenter. I'm trying to get to the page.
Cana Capital.
Cana Capital, um, Ms. Kason, uh, because there isn't a scheduled date yet. And if she could get, um, if she could mitigate some of those costs for the personnel within her budget, 'cause that's literally, um, over, nearly a half of the budget for each of those events is personnel staff. Um, but it doesn't include the attorneys or the people who are doing the, the expungement work. Um, but I would love to see then for us to set up something in tandem, so that we can have the big event that's already happening, get in there, assess the situation at hand, see if we can get people served. If not, or if someone has to go away and come back, this is the date that you're coming back with our next event to do your follow-ups and to put people in place, have it in someplace that's absolutely accessible, give them more money because they need it, um, to, to cover what is left, and then, um, see how it, uh, collect data at every single opportunity so that we can share a narrative and see how it shakes out.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. Um, and I have a, a similar mind in terms of, um, the Guns one. Well, similar mind of the, the Guns one because of the most economical, so yes, let's allocate those resources, support them. Um, and then Stash, uh, their well-defined partnership and on their way, and so we can come alongside and support them and bolster their efforts there. Um, but I would like to find a way to also, um, support and work with, uh, Candace Capital Foundation and the Minorities for Medical Marijuana as well. Um, so did you have something that you wanted to, to add, Commissioner St. Clair?
Um, I was mostly just listening, but, um, I, I'm looking at the, the Candace Capital proposal and the list of, um, what we're referring to as wraparound services. As a mental health professional, that means something different in my world. So, um, but a, at a glance, the majority of these partners are independent community, um, the resources that would probably be available for any of these ventures. I would like to see something like that incorporated into any venture that we backed. Because I think that these are, you know, I, I love the idea of having onsite voter's registration and reaching out to, um, the veterans community and Michigan Works. And, um, so I think that is my favorite part of, um, Candace's proposal, and it is the most accessible to everyone doing this, because if you ask most of these, um, community entities to come, they will show up on a Saturday, on a Sunday, on a holiday, um, for free. So, um, I think that that is, that is something that all of you who are proposing would do well to be looking at. Like, who can we bring in, in the community that would help support the folks that are coming through, so.
Excellent. Thanks for that input.
And also, I, I concur with Commissioner Ramsey's and your idea of, um, you know, I think supporting what Stash is already doing and looking at, um, Guns just for, I, I know that they have the expertise, I know they've done it, they're a very affordable option. I'd like to see Candace come back with, um, a different budget. Or with a way that we could help support them in a, in the same way that we're looking at helping to support Stash, that we would not, that we would not be the primary funder. Um, that there would be other entities at the table that we could contribute, um, to them as well.
Thank you, Commissioners St. Clair. Commissioner Emery, Commissioner Gorman, do you have anything to add or ask at this time?
That's it.
All right. Have you heard enough to proceed and act on? Or are you looking for something more definitive from the Commission on next steps, Mr. Franzick?
I think I got it, but maybe a motion or something more definitive help, I think. I'm hearing we could probably support the-
So, yeah.
Support the Guns.
Guns, so Commissioners are all on board with a fully funding and supporting Guns. Um, are we in agreement on that? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So you got your answer on that?
Yes, and then looking at donating towards Stash's. And then having Ms. Kason, see if she can get some more sponsors and making a donation to that as well.
And potentially revising the budget. I think there was some concern about, um, how much was going to administration or just to staffing that was not directly serviced to, um, the expungement process, or those being expunged. Is that, am I correct?
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Ramsey?
Absolutely, yeah.
What I heard from you?
Um, and also, are we looking at a, a number? Um, and also are we looking at a, a number, Michael? Is there a number that we're looking, divvying up or that we're utilizing?
Yeah, so it's last year's and this year's. Um, I think we're around
Should
We have, we have it budgeted.
Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, which is at sixty thousand right now. Um, and then we're going to be discussing later in this evening uh how much to allocate towards our uh Muskegon Marijuana Social Equity Program. And so we could potentially re-up and add additional resources to it, but the existing budget or, or bucket of money that we're operating from for expungements is sixty thousand.
So uh then I would say, me, Michael Ramsey, City Commissioner Ward III, would say that I would look at it in percentages and I would absolutely fund one hundred percent of the Guns initiatives here in town, that's amazing. Uh, give as much as we can to um Stash where it's beneficial, right, to serve our, our neighbors better um within those specific pockets. Um, you can go through their well-laid out budget and see what that is and then offer the same amount or the same opportunity to Canis um with some revision of their budget, but then also to maybe encourage them to partner with Guns in a way that's real and relevant. If there's some tools of the trade to be learned and swapped or to put on a bigger, better event, let's make that happen. But I think that if you broke it down into percentages with making sure that Guns got one hundred percent of their seven thousand dollar ask, um that there should be enough to go around and be, be helpful.
Commissioner Hood?
So, we are talking about everyone, all three.
I, my under
Because I'm just getting a little confused, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing that, but everyone's saying it in a different way. So I'm just want to get some clarity.
Yes, good question, so it sounds like we're all in agreement of fully funding the uh Guns, gaining uh unity through uh Nonviolent Solutions uh proposal, fully funding that. Um, and then the question of how much, to what extent fund either the other proposals. Um, it sounds like uh Commissioner Ramsey would like to put more of the resources for Stash um and then potentially revisit um funding or partnering with um the Canis Capital uh Foundation and uh Marijuana for Medical Marijuana. Um, but that, um, am I misunderstanding what you said?
No, you're one hundred percent correct.
Um, so it sounds like they're in the running, but at least what I heard from Commissioner Ramsey is maybe not fund them fully or to a significant extent at this time. But that's still to be determined, so um what? So we've only, the only thing we have commission consensus on right now is fully funding the, the Guns proposal and now to, to be determined how to handle the other two proposals.
Would that be the, would that be the one-time Guns or all three?
If it's sixty thousand dollars, Michael, I would suggest doing all three.
No, Guns is only the two thousand dollars for one.
No, but if the money we're talking about is sixty grand that we know for sure we have to play with.
So, we could do all three and then that would be
All three Guns.
I mean all three Guns.
Yeah, and that would be six thousand plus the five thousand for each, fifteen thousand, you're talking about twenty-one thousand for their three.
Yeah.
So we could do that. I kind of like to see each of them do clinics. And see how, and then reassess and maybe
So we did ask all applicants to provide, provide one and three. So this way we'd probably give them each an opportunity to do one, I'm thinking. And then there'd be more money left over for the other two.
Our one
And then it's kind of proof in the pudding in terms of
Well, no, what, what at the clinics is going to cost us fifty thousand dollars for one?
Oh, no, that doesn't mean we're necessarily, so, yes, you could fund that. I'm not saying to fund that, I'm saying to help support and move forward each of them. That doesn't mean we're going to be funding the full amount for each of them, just to clarify.
Right.
Uh, I'm not saying give the full funding for each, all three. Commissioner Hood?
So again, if I'm understanding, we said fully funding Guns for one.
For, at least one.
At least one, and then partially funding two and three with uh Stash and um Ms. Kason.
Which we have the opportunity, if, you know, Guns does a phenomenal job with theirs, but I'm sure they will, they've got great people uh working on that, well-experienced. Um, and it may be the, the bait, the, the most bang for your buck. Uh, it may perfectly be sensible to then uh say, yes, we want to do a, a second one and a third one uh with them. Because they've already identified a lot of those partners and those resources that are coming at no or low cost. Um, so they're able to, my impression is they're operating most efficiently perhaps um in terms of advancing their expungement clinics. Yeah. Commissioner Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm just going to say it one last time as clearly as I can because I think that there is some confusion. So I would like to propose that we fund all three of the Guns events. I would like to propose that we give a good chunk of change to the Stash event based on the money that they have coming in. Are there specific things that we can provide for them that provide benefits to our neighbors? Fund those options. And then thirdly, for um Canis Capital, I would love to have them revisit their budget. Um, so that we can partner on something that is more comfortable than twenty thousand dollars of one event that costs fifty going to personnel. That to me is too high of an amount and isn't being fed back into the community for the purpose of the event. So.
Okay.
I support that.
So, we'd be looking at, so what are you thinking? Okay, we can do the, the three events for Guns and then how much are you looking to allocate to Stash?
Yeah, and it's not like we have to, it's not like that's money burning a hole in our pocket, right? So let's partner with Stash, see what parts of their event that need to be covered that are super important, like if it's not the event because they have the space. But if there's certain aspects of the event that are really beneficial to our neighbors, let's cover those if they're not already being covered. And so it doesn't have to be a set amount, right? Where can we get in and support? What does that actually look like with intentionality and not just a blank check? Um, and then we get to be better stewards of our money so that if we have an opportunity to, to um partner moving forward with Canis Capital, we still have some change in the bucket to do so. And by change, I mean, you know, fifteen grand. But then it's all intentional, meaningful and it will have an outcome for our community that is not just us throwing money at something, which I think is important.
Okay, so.
Yes, Commissioner Hood?
Okay, so Stash, what are we saying that we're funding for Stash?
Well, they're asking for, I, their total budget is close to fifty thousand, so.
Right, so that we're saying fifty thousand and then we're saying that um the other, um, um, what is it called?
Canis Capital.
Cannabis Capital.
Both of them are about fifty thousand, one's just over fifty thousand, one's under, just under fifty thousand.
Way too much, I'm not understanding that.
The, yeah, and so this is a question for me. The issue that I have with Canis Capital is that the personnel to sap the event alone the day is twenty thousand dollars. Like that's just for three people. If you look at the budget for Canis, or for Stash, you'll see where it breaks out into the documents. Like the only question I have about the Stash um budget is the thirty-seven thousand for Glenn. G L E N, which is obviously some sort of acronym that I'm sure if I reread it, I would find.
Great, Expongent Network.
But it's for the five hundred dollar per full expungement. So that is a continuation of the work that started, but we could come in for Stash and say that we as the city are going to pay for all the iChats. We're going to pay for all the fingerprinting and we're going to cover the cost of the notary and the stamps, right? Like that's specific things that we know because we want them to be free for, for city residents, we could cover that.
Yeah, and we're actually going to have, I believe, a notary onsite already, so we could defray that cost. Because aren't we going to have someone from the clerk's office? As my understanding, when we did this RFP, we said we were going to have, they're looking at it like, what? But when we, when we approved this RFP, we said we wanted someone from the clerk's office on, onsite, proof, doing proof of residency. Um, and so, you don't remember that? Perfect!
I think that's a surprise.
So, well, we talked about it and it was all, it was all like, oh yeah, I think a lot of it was like, we'll have someone from the clerk's office onsite.
Manager under the bus.
Somebody has to die so that we'll have someone from the clerk's office onsite um for these clinics.
We have a notary in the planning department too, so.
What's that?
We have a notary in the planning department.
Okay, so we could potentially have someone in the planning department there. You're off the hook, clerk. Not, not like you don't have enough to do, we don't need to put more. Um, so we could potentially have a notary onsite, doing those notary services as well as the proof of residency. And that could help defray the cost further than. So there are a number of ways that we can support these clinics without actual outlay of dollars. Yeah.
So there are step, oh, are you, I'm sorry, I was having a side conversation with Commissioner Hood, explaining to him what my concerns were with the, with the other budget. Did you ask a question or did you make a statement?
Statement.
Support.
Yes. Commissioner St. Clair?
I um, I really like the idea of providing funding for specific things. I like the idea of that we pay for the iChat, we pay for the background checks, those are very specific and measurable. And if they don't have the turnout, then it does not come out of our budget and then we have it to try again with somebody else. I, I understand that um Stash also has other funders that are contributing to this in a substantial way. So I think that is another thing that was different in between Stash and Cana.
And it's not lost on me and I'm sure none of my colleagues that what a great opportunity for us to have three wonderful proposals for people who are coming in here to do great things in our community. So thank each and every one of you for what you do every single day for the people who live here that I call neighbors. Um, there was a time when this wasn't an option for us and now it is and that's because of the great work that you guys do. So even though we're, it feels like we're slicing and dicing up here, it's just so that we can be the best stewards of the, of the little bit of money that we have for it to go to the firsts. So thank you.
Indeed. Any additional questions or anything else to add over here? Over here? Okay, so we're going to move forward with uh fully funding three clinics with Guns. And then we're going to be funding specific elements of the Stash Venture Expungement Clinic while also providing additional resources, non-financial resources um to help defray costs. Um, and then we're going to be inviting, if my understanding correctly, we're going to be inviting, um, is this, I want to understand this is consensus of the Commission, that we're going to be inviting uh Canis Capital and their team
Absolutely.
To um perhaps retool their budget, come back, um, or partner with one of these other entities, um and perhaps resubmit. And we're going to have more resources to, to come, to come to bear.
There's enough one to go around.
All right. Any, any questions or concerns on this before we move on? All right, do you have anything else? Uh, do you understand uh how we're proceeding, Mr. Franzick or?
Got it.
Do you have any outstanding questions?
I'll put something together.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is our, our first time with this. We've, we have uh intentionally set aside money for our social equity program. And of that money that we've set aside for our social equity program, out of these excise tax revenues collected from these cannabis operations, we've earmarked money for expungement clinics. Um, that has accumulated over the past few years because we have not um done expungement clinics as a city. Some of us individually have uh worked with and supported expungement clinics, but this is our first opportunity as a city to put these dollars to work. And we are, as Commissioner Ramsey said, so fortunate that we have members in our community who are doing this work already. And we don't necessarily have to do it, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, uh we can come alongside and partner and support. And so we're grateful for those community partners and the work that you're doing. And I'm excited to see these dollars put uh, uh, put to benefit for our community.
You're here.
So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Franzick, but don't go anywhere because the next item. Our education funding from the same social equity program.
Just made of money.
Yeah, thanks.
And this is utilizing the um, because we had, most of the dollars that had been allocated in twenty twenty-one have been used. We have just only seven hundred and twenty dollars left, um, at least from the December work session, we had seven hundred and twenty dollars left of that uh thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollar allocation. And uh then we additionally allocated forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty uh for education and harm reduction with the twenty twenty-two funding that we received. And so, we, we directed Mr. Franzick last December to help us spend those education and, and harm reduction dollars. And it sounds like you've got a um organization that uh can put those resources to work.
Yep, so my staff was very helpful in um looking for opportunities, you know, we had the December work session, we didn't have a great idea, but you asked us to go look out for organizations that could help, so we did that and we found uh one that we really think fits the bill here, it's Mediation and Restorative Services. They provided community conflict resolution services for twenty-nine years and have provided restorative justice program for twenty-one years. This funding would be used for community prevention, education, family and youth-directed services and marketing awareness. Um, so this would be a thirteen-month program that they would offer. Um, and they would offer different programs such as providing one-on-one accountability sessions with uh city Muskegon residents, youth and their parents uh for up to fifty youth. Provide monthly group accountability panels for city Muskegon school infractions involving marijuana or nicotine for youth and their parents and no charge. Uh, attend neighborhood association meetings to share about the free services for families and how they can access these services. Uh, they would hold monthly parent-family discussion groups on the impact of using marijuana, marijuana while underage. They would coordinate with the Coalition for a Drug-Free Muskegon County to track and review all youth marijuana current programs and fill gaps as needed. They would visit cannabis-selling establishments located in Muskegon to discuss youth prevention efforts and provide marketing needs to reduce the sale to minors. They would offer incentives to cannabis-selling establishments that engage in efforts to reduce the sale to minors. Um, they would partner with the City Muskegon Police Department to enforce and diversion referrals for city Muskegon youth involved in marijuana-related activities and uh they are here tonight if you have any questions.
Excellent, Mr. Franzick, I would welcome um if you both would share your name.
Hello, everybody, I'm Jackie Halberg and I'm the Executive Director of Mediation and Restorative Services.
Hi, I'm Sarah Delarosa, I'm the Program Manager of the Exit Program, which is a program of mediation and restorative services. We do jail reentry work and previous to this role in a brief stint somewhere else, I was um with M N R S for six years, providing the youth um services as well, so.
Awesome, well, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening and submitting uh this, this proposal for how do we can use these resources to, to benefit our community. So anything that you wish to um add beyond what Mr. Franzick uh shared with us?
So he did a great job, first of all, so I appreciate that, but what you heard before us were three amazing proposals to reduce people's criminal records. We want to prevent them from ever getting criminal records by working with our city youth, giving them some needed information. I have been doing prevent, or intervention work with youth throughout all of Muskegon County for almost twenty years now. And what I hear over and over from both the youth and the parents are, why didn't I hear this sooner? We are getting so many kids from area schools that they think they're just using a vape pen that has nicotine, but their friends already had marijuana in it and they're getting them using it and then they're getting a drug charge or the potential of a drug charge, potential of a full expulsion out of the schools because they didn't even know. So we want to make sure that your constituents really get a voice in saying, how can we market to families right here in our community? How can we give them these prevention awareness opportunities both for the kids themselves and for the adults? What we hear time and time again with the kids that were actually getting referrals from the other schools and from um the juvenile court, they're getting it sometimes from their older brother and sister, they're getting it from their aunts, they're getting it from their neighbors. How can we make sure that we let youth know, yes, marijuana is legal, it is so legal if you're of age. If you're not of age, it is not only illegal and it can definitely do some different air repair in your brain. And we want to make sure that that doesn't come back and bite everybody in the legal capacity because what it's doing to some of the youth. So we want to offer those prevention services to kids that have never experienced marijuana, but also early intervention for some of the kids that are getting their first time charge or the potential of a first time charge. Because we want kids to know that even though it's legal for your parents or your older brother or sister or your neighbors, it's not legal for you. And if you're willing to break the law to use marijuana, what other laws are you willing to break? Are you going to break into my neighbor's car now? Are you going to come and are you going to beat somebody up? Are you going to do something else illegal? So that's where our focus is. It's not to bash marijuana establishments, it's really to value marijuana establishments that are really doing a legit job to make sure it isn't getting into our youth hands. Anything you want to add on that, Sarah?
No, I just wanted to um highlight some of the things that we have been doing for twenty-plus years and it's kind of in the purple, but this is not something that's new for us. Um, the, we tend to focus on um at this point just overall accountability for being involved in criminal activities. But the reason for that is because we used to hold substance abuse panels monthly and when there were some shift, shifts in the law, it kind of prevented youth from being actually charged with these crimes. And um when there isn't a charge, they don't necessarily, aren't forced to go to these types of classes. And so we want folks to be able to come to, know they can come to our classes if a parent is suspecting their kid is using. They, they don't, shouldn't have to escalate to the level of needing a, a criminal involvement. Um, so that's kind of one of the things we want to open it up to. And then to also just say that, you know, we've been doing this for quite some time. There have been shifts in law that have changed the way our programming looks and we're trying to get back to some of that more tailored, focused discussions. Because um, you know, this is a new Because, you know, this is a new discussion that parents are having with youth in the last few years. And also trying to educate parents on why it's important that they are, you know, if they are using marijuana or not using marijuana, why it's important that they support their youth not being involved in that, which is something that we hear often. You know, if parents don't see a problem with it and why it could really, you know, cause some challenges in the future. Not shaming, our, our programming is very much education-focused. We don't do the, um, the shame education because that's not effective. We really want to educate our youth and help them understand the decisions they're making. A lot of instances, our, our youth sessions, we in the past had speakers about, you know, when I, when I made this decision, this is really what happened. So that they can understand that we're not just, you know, making these things up. I work with a lot of people that are involved in the criminal justice system at the felony level. And a lot of their day-to-day discussions are, you know, if I only knew when I was a kid what path I was on. And this is just one way we're trying to talk about that.
And one of the cool things about the money that we would use is we are a tiny nonprofit, but we've been around 29 years and we stretch our dollars. We need a staff capacity for this, and we are very confident that we could really rock this out with a part-time staff member. Ultimately, we would love to try to find a city resident to want this position because they know the city so much better. I mean, we do, we've been housed in Muskegon City forever, um, our whole time. But one of the things is you get your bang for your buck because it's not just a youth program. It's not just an adult program. It's your parent or guardian and the youth the whole time. So it is that double education piece. And it's really to say, how can we work together so your kids don't end up in our other programs that are dealing with the felony adult-level situations or the higher end with the juvenile crime? So that's what we're presenting tonight. We have lots of opportunities to have constituent and commission buy-in on how we would market. Do we want billboards or do we want to do other things? Do we want to market and send stuff to the schools directly? Or are they going to be through the neighborhoods directly? We want your guys' input. This is not something that we're going to say we are in charge of marketing. We really want it to be a group focus and to see how many people in the community can really step up and be a part of that education with us.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Yeah, I, I think what you're proposing here in terms of the education and the harm reduction, having those conversations with, with parents and having the parents have the conversations with their youth. And not only helping to ensure that our youth don't become justice-involved themselves, but understand how use and abuse of cannabis and other substances, especially as a young, developing age, can be detrimental to their future in a myriad of different ways. That's very much aligns with, I think, the commission's intent when we establish the education component of our socioeconomic program and putting those dollars more so than just putting up billboards saying, you know, be cognizant of the, the ills or the, the detriments of cannabis. It was meant to be more of kind of the programming that you're offering here. So I appreciate the work that you're doing and what you presented tonight. Commissioner St. Clair.
I, um, I'm so excited to see this proposal. Jackie and I were talking earlier. I did my internship with Restorative Justice Center when I was a baby social work intern 19 years ago. And I can speak for days on Restorative Justice and the work that they do. They've been doing it for a long time and they're really good at it. But I can also speak on how impactful it is. There are so many services out there available to people that are not very effective. And the model that they use is incredibly effective at creating organic change. I can also speak to the fact that there is a huge deficit in resources regarding prevention and education. While, you know, as, as a mental health professional, we see, we see a lot of youth starting earlier and earlier. And parents who are really frustrated by what their kids are getting into and they don't know, they don't know what to do and they don't know where to go. And there is a huge gap in, um, in services in this community that this could fit in perfectly.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Clair. Commissioner Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a couple of things. I want to start by thanking Mr. Franzick. Before the mayor was the mayor, he was my loudmouth buddy out here at the end of the bench. And he and I fought long and hard to get a real educational aspect of this work to go out to support parents who don't know how to have conversations with their kids about marijuana use. And this is it, Michael, so great job. This looks amazing.
Credit goes to Sam Budosse and my work.
Credit check, yeah. This is exactly what, um, former Commissioner Ken Johnson and I asked for, for hours at a time, one night, and you delivered it. So that looks great. And I'm very excited that we get the opportunity to work with Mediation and Restorative Services. When I was at Community and Compass as their ED over homeless services, we partnered with them, Trinity partnered with them, to facilitate $25 million of rental assistance to our neighbors. And I had Mediation and Restorative Services on staff to go into every single room where there was a chance for mitigation between residents and their landlords. So they could better understand how to interact with one another moving forward so that we didn't end up in the same predicament, so that it wasn't a band-aid that we got to learn from. And amazing work done by your organization, so I obviously support this. Now, I will say that your admin is a little high for me from a federal government level.
13 months, Michael.
I know it's 13 months, so we're going to let that go. But I appreciate the $10,000 for marketing outreach and enforcement because that oftentimes to co-sign, not that she needs it. What Commissioner St. Clair said is we oftentimes forget about that and how we have to be able to get the word out about what's going on. Otherwise, people don't know that the services are available. And that is always the first budget that we pull from. So thank you for paying special attention to that and knowing that it's about sharing the narrative. This is exciting. I think this is great and I can't wait to support it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Ramsey.
Oh, two more things. I'll come back to you.
Yes, Mr. Emery.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm, really had not heard of your agency.
A lot of people don't.
Yes.
They don't want to talk about us because it's a bad time.
You know, I have a long history of working with juveniles and worked in a residential treatment center. So I am very impressed with it. And I'm, I'm looking at your website right now and the Board of Directors. I know quite a few of them personally, so I am very impressed. So welcome. I welcome you. Thank you.
We do appreciate you. One of the things about mediation, um, people come to us at some of the lowest parts of their life. Either they're going through a divorce, they're being challenged by a supervisor, an employer, their kids are getting involved in the court system, they're facing jail time or prison time. And so people don't share about us. So I appreciate you guys being willing to learn about our agency. One of the trickle effects about having this additional staff person to do this is that we do all parent-child conflicts. So we help with truancy issues. Parents and kids don't know how to even talk about cell phone usage. And we're seeing some really not good stuff going down through kids getting charges with stuff that's on their cell phone. And kids are looking at their cell phones, parents are looking at their cell phone. When we work with them, they look at each other in the face, sometimes for the first time in maybe years. So there's a lot of trickle-down with this too, so I appreciate your support.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Gorman, do you have anything to ask or add this time?
Yeah, real quick. Thank you for acknowledging, um, the need for a neighbor in our community to walk alongside you in this. I just really appreciate you saying that and know that, that you really mean it, and we're excited to work with you.
Excellent.
And I'm going to challenge everybody on the commission, including you, Mayor. If you want to be involved in some of this community discussion, if you guys want to be a voice with some of the parents, there's an opportunity for us to do some peace circles in that community networking. So please feel free that this isn't just, hey, grab us some money and we're out of here and we're not going to come back and talk to you guys. We really want your involvement as much as you want to be, and we can share that information throughout some of the different levels of this.
Absolutely, yeah. Keep us informed in the loop so that we can be that partner to you and help promote and invite people into the process. Commissioner Hood, anything to add or ask? All right, Commissioner Ramsey, follow up.
Yep, two things. And Commissioner Gorman, I have one of them. I'm excited to hear that this is a position that you're going to be looking to fill and that's something that you're tacking onto the side of someone's desk. That's very important work, but in a nonprofit that is understaffed and underpaid, that's what we do, so thank you for that. And then I also will encourage you wholeheartedly, Jackie, and I will walk around with you and make every single connection if I need to. Our cannabis businesses in Muskegon also think that kids shouldn't be smoking pot.
Exactly.
And I think that that's super important. So you have partners that are literally waiting to work with you to help mitigate these circumstances. Do not be afraid to reach out to them. And if you can't get ahold of someone, don't be afraid to ask someone on this bench for help.
We appreciate that greatly.
Like they are ready.
It's past time. It's past time, I think. Thank you guys for taking out the time tonight. And again, thank you to Director Franzick for bringing our proposal in front of you guys. We do appreciate that greatly.
Yeah, and on a final note, just to piggyback on what Commissioner Ramsey was referencing, we do have a couple operators with Integro downtown who have already done. So if you haven't connected with them yet, I would encourage you to connect with them because they have done. Um, some of that, bringing parents in, have those conversations, understanding how can you talk to and handle this, this issue with your youth, which I was, uh, was, was a nice, I hadn't seen that. So it was nice to see a cannabis operation facilitating that, so.
Anything else or are we good?
I think we're good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Halberg. Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the work that you're doing. Mr. Franzick. All right, sounds like we've got broad commission support to move forward with this, uh, the use of these dollars that we've allocated for this purpose. Do you have anything else that you need from us on this item this evening?
No, I don't believe so. I think we'll probably put like a contract together or something and bring it to a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Don't go anywhere. Now, we have the marijuana excise tax revenues. And so we've talked about how to use up the dollars that we have received in prior years, but we've got an additional bucket of money that is coming to us. It was announced about a couple of months ago. How much we're getting? Have we received it yet? Do you know? Maybe that's a question for our finance department, but
I think we have it.
We've got money coming or it has arrived already. Now it's a question of how do we use these resources? Do we continue with the same allocation in terms of our, our socioeconomic program? Or do we deviate? And how, how do we, what do we do with the balance of the dollars? But I'll, uh, let our planning manager report out on this, this topic.
Uh, yeah, so we're going to be receiving $622,000 this year. In the past, we've allocated 35% of that to go towards the MSEP. Quite a bit of money. I believe I had it in, maybe I don't, but, um, sounds like Commissioner Ramsey here is working on a calculation.
No, I had to write that. I had to say that number out loud and then write it down so I could see how many zeros are apart there.
Well, my, my recommendation would probably be
If, if we maintain that 35% of that, it'd be $217,732, which is approximately a $70,000 increase from our allocation for last year. Because we'd allocated $158,000 to our socioeconomic program with last year's money.
Yeah, I, I mean, I personally think, um, that might be a little high for the MSEP. We did have some challenges in the past trying to allocate some of this money. Looks like we're finally on our way doing that here. The Grants and Loans Project has worked very well. Probably would like to see a little bit more funding for that. So that's good, but I'd probably recommend a smaller portion to the MSEP and the rest to go to the general fund.
Do you need any additional resources for yourself or your department in terms of administering our socioeconomic program? Or, um, your capacity in overseeing our cannabis licensing and coordination operations? Are there any more additional resources that we should be carving out from here? And you can, you can say you don't have a specific dollar in mind if you are, and you can think on it, but I'm just wondering, should we be given thought to earmarking some of these dollars specifically to supporting the work that you and your team are doing in relation to how we are receiving and using these dollars?
Well, I'm not usually one to turn down extra funding for more staff, but I, I do not think that would be necessary. We hired a planner too, a little less than two years ago. We've had some turnover, but that position does do quite a bit of the marijuana work in terms of collecting the applications and reviewing them. We don't really get many new applications now. We have a lot of renewals. Those are easier to review. That staff person also helps me out with allocating the MSEP dollars and coming up and finding these fine organizations. And we still have some additional capacity to do some more work. I know other ideas has been thrown around. We do have a staff person in the Development Services Team that works on bids and things like that, so I think that's covered. I'm definitely willing and open to more ideas of, of how we can help this industry. But I think we have the capacity to do that right now.
Okay, so, and I'm sure you participated in the Cannabis Summit that happened last year. Perhaps we might preprise that at some point to, to reengage our cannabis operators to understand where they're at, where they're going, problems, pitfalls, how we might be able to be a partner or an extra support for them. But at this point, given what you know, you're, you feel comfortable with the resources that you have available and the capacity that you have available. And if such is needed more additionally in the future, you'll revisit that with us and finance and the city manager?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to co-sign everything that, that he just said, Mr. Franzick. I think that if we're collecting 200 and, or $622,000 of tax from these businesses, that we need a position that supports them? That doesn't, that feels like it's wholly dedicated to them. I think that are we, I wonder, are we missing an opportunity to better engage and partner with the cannabis industry in West Michigan? And if so, how does that not sit on the side of someone's desk? Which sounds accusatory and it's not meant to be, but you just mentioned several people who are sort of doing this work. How do we have one person who solely does this work? How do we make it so that we are capitalizing on every single dime that we have coming in? And that as we begin to experience the oversaturation that I referenced in the first place of this market? And the change in turnover that is currently happening in the cannabis industry in Muskegon? That they have resource and referral and opportunity to get help where they need? Or that there is someone who is there for them, right at a city level? Who has all the time for them? And that this is a large amount of money. And if we can make this more by hiring someone who does this work specifically, that sounds like an investment to me. And I would just really like you to consider that, but I would never tell you how to do your job.
Sure, I'm just, uh, wondering what they would be doing. We have the capability of assisting businesses. We don't get a lot of calls from them asking for assistance. We did attend the Cannabis Summit, and I think the number one outcome of that was the request to put a cap on the licenses, which we never determined we were going to do. But other than that, I didn't really hear a request for a lot of services, for city services from them. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, so we, we currently have a difference of opinion in what community engagement and partnership looks like, and that's okay. I just think that if there's an opportunity for you to have one dedicated staff member instead of it living with three or four people, yourself included, that does this work and the mayor is offering that opportunity, uh, maybe do some legwork. And see if there's, see what other cities are doing that they're large and in charge. Lean into our engagement and community people in CNS and with Ms. Deborah Sweet and see if they have any suggestions for you as well. But I would support somebody if you could make it work in the best way.
I will do some research and see what other cities are doing. I know Grand Rapids has a single staff person for that.
They do.
So.
And they don't have much, that much more money than we get.
Right.
And so, um, I think it is helpful to have a dedicated person, whether it's someone on your staff or ready, that it's a go-to, um, that can be that dedicated resource. Or it's, you know, identifying additional staff member or a new member, whether it's part-time, full-time. But I do think that could be beneficial, not only in terms of, uh, helping and coordinating with our existing cannabis operators, um, but also helping any of our residents who are interested in getting in the business, understand some of that, that process. And maybe not hold their hands entirely and do it for them, but help them navigate that. And the more that we can preserve, I know Commissioner Ramsey says the market's oversaturated, the market will sustain what the market can sustain. But if we can be supportive to help it sustain as many of them as possible, because we're getting this money by virtue of those businesses existing. It's like $51,841 per cannabis operation. And so we know one is just recently closed and we're not going to begin that share next year unless they reopen. Well, actually, no, they existed for a portion of this year, so I think we'll still get their cut. But we would want to support, you know, what, what we have and, and keep them going. And perhaps promote some cannabis tourism to, to folks in Milwaukee since Wisconsin does not have, allow recreational cannabis. And a lot of our other states surrounding us do not have the same level of, of access as well. So I just, just something to, to think about, reflect on, see how we might be able to, uh, provide that additional support. And yeah, like you said, look at the Grand Rapids position. I don't know if, um, I don't, I'll be frank, I don't know, um, the intricacies of that position to say, yes, I want to recreate that position here. I do know they have one, but I don't know what all they do in that position. But I also see as someone that can be that point person for our socioeconomic program and, um, and manage that and move that forward as well. But I think But I think our city manager, I'm sorry, I think he wanted to, to jump in.
Um, so I, I think it's worth having a discussion on where the, the board sees priorities of, of, of where we spend our dollars. But I think it would also be a good idea for staff to look at how our, uh, staff is currently allocated within resources to see where it is that we need particular resources. Um, and if, and if we're able to achieve, uh, what the objectives of the board, of the board with the current staffing, or if there is different needs in different areas, determine that through the budget process as we move forward. Um, also, these dollars are relatively new, um, and we don't know where they're gonna end up panning out. And so, I would hate to move forward with creating a position, um, that we might have to look at eliminating or rolling back, uh, at a, you know, a near ti- a near point in the future, so.
Wouldn't it also be a shame, Mr. Manager, if we had to eliminate a position because these dollars dropped for lack of support?
I'm just saying, it would be nice, and I'm not gonna argue with you or with Mr. Franzick, but I will if you want, that having an on-staff subject matter expert in cannabis would not hurt us at all. And if it lives in four people, because that's how Michael wants to see it, fine, I'll shut up about it. But if there's an opportunity for us to get someone who does this work all the time, that literally is an internal resource to every person in this community in regards to cannabis business, do it. It's not often that we get to do things like this.
And, I, well, I, I.
Okay.
No, you can respond.
Well, I, I, yeah.
You can respond to me.
Well, I, it's, it's not so much necessarily just responding to you. I, the, you know, loo- looking at these, at this revenue, um, you know, in, in some, you know, communities do it different ways and there's no one right way or wrong way to do it. Um, but an- another way to kind of think about this as well is that, you know, this, this revenue is the equivalent to about, um, four point nine million, or sorry, forty-nine point nine million dollars in taxable value. Um, and, and so, just looking at how we can use that within the general fund for other things that we have related to, um, any other, you know, myriad of departments that we have and needs that we have throughout the city. Um, so a- as we move through the budget process, keeping kind of a, a ten-thousand-foot view of, of how we can use these resources best throughout the organization. I'm not discounting the, the value that something like that position could bring. Um, I just want to make sure that we're, um, looking at all the options on the table as we go through the budget process, so. And.
Thank you for that, uh, perspective and, and context, Mr. Manager. Uh, Commissioner Hood, I saw that you wanted to, to add or ask something?
Yeah, my question was, we're talking about having a marijuana expert onboard at the city?
I, so the, the, the exact fleshing out of the, the job and its description would be determined, but having someone be supported with these dollars, um, as a cannabis coordinator and social equity program manager? Um, so a go-to person within City Hall. And I guess, yes, you could say cannabis expert, maybe? I don't know. Um, that'd be determined. It's, it's, it's a question, the original question was like, do you have the resources you need? Um, and then there's a question of do we want to commit, um, additional resources? And to get to the, to speak to the Mr. Ma- Mr. Manager's point about, uh, these dollars being in flux, my thought was that if we do allocate specific resources for that position, that that would be coming off the top. And then we allocate the other resources as needed for our social equity program or any other needs, uh, so that that position, whether part-time, full-time, contract work, uh, would be sustainable. Um, and to Commissioner Ramsey's point earlier, the, the more that we can do to ensure the sustainability of our cannabis operators in the city of Muskegon, specifically retailers, because that's the calculation is based upon the retailers, um, the greater likelihood these dollars are gonna continue at this elevated. And we might see a pullback, um, but we probably won't see a pullback to the first year numbers, which were, first year we got a hundred and twelve thousand, the next year we got four hundred and fifty-one thousand, and this year we've got six hundred and twenty-two thousand. So on average, we've seen three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars over the three years. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Sorry, I mean, maybe a roundabout way of answering. Um, so, also, speaking to the manager's point about these dollars being in flux on a year-to-year basis, and it could pull, pull back, we could see a significant drop, um, that, um, I guess I would be, I, what I'm wondering going forward in terms of allocating these resources, not just to our social equity program, but potentially to other non-operating but capital-intensive allocations. Because, um, as we've heard from our finance director in the past and, and the, the manager, other, uh, leadership, is that these special revenues you don't always use for ongoing operations, um, but could be used for capital needs. I mean, we talked about just recently the need for building up capital for, um, equipment, public safety equipment and police and fire, so that we can pay as you go instead of having to finance it. And so, what I'm also wondering as part of this conversation is do we commit a certain percentage to our social equity program? Commit a certain percentage to public safety, capital needs, potentially earmarking, dedicate money towards parks and recreation? So we're, um, again, identifying additional revenue streams specific to parks and recreation. As we know, there are many, many millions of dollars of need in that regard. And potentially, um, commit a percentage to our local streets, which we don't do enough. Um, in fact, I don't think we generally do any general fund transfers to our local streets, um, uh, limited ones? Okay, so, um, I would like to see, I'd be interested in perhaps bolstering our general fund support for our, our local streets as well. But I'm just tossing out some ideas for us to, to discuss and reflect on. So, I see some nodding heads, but what are your, your thoughts or questions or, or concerns, um, about how we might, uh, proceed with allocating these dollars? Commissioner St. Clair.
I like the idea of allocating some of it to parks in Iraq and more specifically Iraq. I think that, um, that would go a long way towards prevention, which goes a long way towards reducing consumption among youth, which goes a long way towards reducing criminal activity and criminal behaviors. Um, that's something that I think would, would very clearly align with the social equity, while also filling a, a pretty large hole in the budget. I would go so far as to say I would like to see a standing portion of that, some percentage to be allocated towards recreation. Um, yeah, I'm totally open to discussion on that, but just off, off the top of my head, um, I really like that idea. I also would throw out there that that might be a way to offset some of the fire bond money so that we can free up some, uh, block grant dollars for other community resources. So, I think, I think there's lots of things that we could do with that that would align with, um, both the bottom dollar needs and the social equity needs. And I'm sorry, it's probably not as helpful or concrete as you would like, but we'll get there.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Clair. Any additional thoughts, questions, concerns? So we need to figure out how we're gonna spend these dollars.
Well, in.
Well, I mean, it's, we're gonna be doing the budget soon. Um, and it'd be helpful to give staff some insight and direction. Our finance director's here. Um, I don't know if he was anticipating using all of these dollars just to plug other holes in our, in our general funnel, but it sounds like we're operating, um, uh, our op- we're operating with a healthy surplus at this point, although it could, uh, shrink by the time we get to year end. But in terms of how do we allocate these resources, I think the, the primary question that, uh, we need to address tonight is do we continue, uh, funding thirty-five percent? And if not thirty-five percent, what's the appropriate percentage? And then do we commit percentages of these dollars to public safety, or to parks, or to streets, or to other capital needs? I'm, I, um.
I guess, from, from a staff perspective, I think the thing that would be most helpful for us and kind of what I'm hearing from the board is that, well, one, we need to figure out what that percent is. Um, and I think, you know, I'm in agreement with Director Franzick that maybe that needs to be, um, dialed back a little bit, um, based on how we've been using the funds the past couple of years. Uh, maybe set a floor there or a ceiling, however you wanna look at it. And then, um, and then get some just general direction from the board on the budget process, on what, what are your priorities, um, going forward? And, and obviously, we've, we've heard about, um, you know, rec conversation for a number of meetings now, um, public safety equipment, things of that nature. So are there ways that as, uh, uh, Director Grant, uh, and the other divisions heads and I move through this budget process, that, um, we keep those priorities in mind and then come to you with a budget? Um, that's not necessarily just looking at this six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, but the budget as a whole that we can look at those priorities? Because I think if, if we start slicing up these, these little buckets, um, it, it makes the whole budget process a little more complicated. Um, and, and we have a lot of different priorities, um, related to essential services that we have to offer. Um, and then we are anticipating, uh, some decreased revenues next year based just on ARPA dollars. Um, so, we're gonna have a little less flexibility, and so it just might be more helpful for us as we go through that process. Um, now, you guys are the elected officials. You guys do, um, uh, report to the public. So i- it is your discretion on, on what that budget looks like in the end. Um, but we have staff, uh, who, uh, looks at this stuff every day and it might be a little bit easier, um, if, if we have some flexibility to be able to make those recommendations.
Support.
I agree.
Alright.
And I have been taking notes on what you've been saying, so.
So, do we have a view from the commission in terms of the social equity program? Because that was the primary question that, uh, we were coming to bear. And, uh, the first year we established this, we were, uh, intentionally doing thirty-five percent without a cap. Obviously, the dollars that were received in the first year were much lower. Uh, the second year, when we revisited this last year, it came to us, uh, the dollars were considerably higher, and it came to us like, do we, uh, put a cap? And we were intentionally not putting a cap and maintaining thirty-five percent last year. The dollars have continued to increase. They're even higher now. So the question is, do we continue with thirty-five percent without a cap? Or do we put some kind of cap on it or reduce the percentage? And so, let's at least get that answered tonight. I would, Commissioner St. Clair.
I, I just have a question. Do you have a recommendation for a percentage or a ceiling that you would recommend?
So, I think if we want to continue the expungement clinics, you know, we're putting on a lot of them now. If we want to continue that into the future, I'm not sure if that's necessary. It may be. Um, then we probably want to keep that. I think the education program we just heard of was pretty great. Probably gonna wanna keep that. And, uh, the grants and loans, I think maybe an additional twenty to thirty thousand would be beneficial for that. So I would put a cap on what we had last year plus an additional maybe twenty or thirty thousand. I think any more than that would be excessive.
So if we did thirty percent out of this year's allocation, that would bring it to a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which is right there in alignment with what you were saying, adding another twenty to thirty to last year's allocation. Does that sound about right to you?
So, yeah.
Okay. In which case, that would leave thirty.
Now, the grants are hard to predict, though. Um, especially if they have to have had a marijuana fence or be a social equity applicant. We're seeing less of those, but again, we're now funding the higher learning program and we anticipate more applicants for that. So, we want to really fund that, that I would encourage the.
Okay, so that if we did thirty percent to the social equity program out of this year's, um, allocation, or this year's revenues received, that would leave four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, I certainly understand, uh, the city manager and our finance directors wish for the greatest maximum flexibility in using of those resources, um, in, in alignment with our priorities overall. Um, I personally would like to see us carve out some of those for our capital needs, um, whether that's parks, whether that's, uh, public safety. But we, we know those need to be funded regardless. Um, our community recognizes those need to be funded. There's concern that we're not funding them enough. Um, and so, it'd be nice to demonstrate that we are saying, here's these special revenues coming in that fluctuate yearly, um, unrelated property taxes, and, and recognize we're getting a lot of property taxes from these cannabis businesses as well going to our general fund. Um, so these are kind of special dollars. Um, ultimately, I would like to, we're not in a position to do this year, this year, and I talked to our city manager a little bit about this, that it would be nice perhaps in the future years to pursue a, uh, community or participatory budget process, uh, where some of these dollars and how they're being spent are driven by our, our community and our residents. Um, but that's not something that we can do this year, but perhaps we can do that in a future year, so. Um, but I don't think we're gonna be in a position to say exactly how much to do to what with all of that and our capital needs tonight. But if staff can perhaps chew on that and, and see what, you know, how much of these you do want to go to the general fund overarching, you know, budget versus how much we can start putting to capital funds for identified needs. We know we're gonna need to be fi- buying more fire trucks. We know we need more investment in, in our parks, so. Um, but, Commissioner, you're comfortable based upon what you're hearing from, uh, our, our planning manager on the needs of these resources for our social equity program going forward, that we commit thirty percent this year of our excise tax revenues, which would be a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars? I know, so not everyone, uh, at home can hear your heads nodding.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I said yes. Okay, sorry.
I am comfortable with, with exactly whatever Mike thinks is best.
Uh, thirty percent sounds reasonable. Is that something we need to bring to a commission? Or should I just change the application now and allocate some funding?
Would this be for, part of this in the current fiscal year, or is this for next? If it's next, if it's next, the, the, next fiscal year, it'll be in the budget?
You're gonna need to, yes, come back on the sub-allocation.
Yeah.
Um, because you want to put more towards the grants and loans, so you may not want to carry forward the sub-allocation from last year. But this is to help you know how much we want to put into the bucket of our social equity program. And then, I presume we'll be revisiting how to divvy that up in terms of the grants and loans piece, the expungement piece, the education harm reduction piece. Um, so I would think there would be some follow-up at some point, I mean.
Sure, so I believe we have the funding now and we could use it. Like, last year we did that too. We didn't wait until the fiscal year. So, I don't have any applicants right now, but I know they're gonna start piling up. And I'd like to do that before the fiscal year ends, so. Yeah, I could shoot for the next meeting or two to come back and percentages and how to divvy that up.
Mm-hmm.
With the thirty percent.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. Do you have any, um, other questions or for us or anything else you need from us to help?
I do not.
Assist you in going forward?
I'll take a look at what other cities are doing with the cannabis managers. Uh, just another statement that, you know, uh, I am the contact person and it, it doesn't take up a great deal of time, not as much as it used to. I do have other staff that assists me with taking the applications or when I'm out. Um, we get very little contact with, uh, or calls or any type of requests from the cannabis industry. So, I guess this new position would have to be more of an outreach or possibly looking at other, other tools that we'd use. So I'll do a little research on that as well.
Mm-hmm.
As it stands now, we're, um, I would just fear that the, that manager would not have a lot to do on a day-to-day basis, so. We'll take a look at what that could potentially look like, though, if we hired someone.
Yeah, yeah, we certainly don't want to be creating positions, just be creating positions and not have them have work to do. Alright, thank you, Mr. Franzick. Alright, you're not going anywhere. This is gonna be your final topic with us, planning director. Um, and that is with regard to animal ordinance and chickens.
Yeah, this is the funnest one. So we took a look at a few different communities. Uh, we noticed that a lot of communities close to our size allow four chickens. Um, the city of East Point allows four chickens. Um, they do need approval form from their neighbors. I would highly recommend we do not do that. I think that just pits neighbors against each other. I think we're either gonna allow things or we are not. Um, city of Whitehall allows four chickens since two thousand twenty-one. They have not really had any problems yet. City of Norton Shores allows the most that we looked into. You do have to have at least two acres of land. If you do, you can have up to fifty chickens, but then for each additional acre of land, you can have another fifty chickens, so. They all. Um, they also require like a coop, which counts against the number of accessory buildings you can have on the property. I wouldn't probably not recommend that because that means somebody with a detached garage or a shed could not have a chicken coop. I wouldn't probably not recommend that because that means somebody with a detached garage or a shed could not have a chicken coop. So I, I would not recommend that if we were gonna do that. City of Grand Rapids, uh, you have to have a minimum square foot lot of five thousand, it's a pretty standard sized lot, you can have four chickens. If you have over five thousand square foot lot, you can have six chickens. Must have your neighbor approval, fifty-three dollar application fee. City of Jackson allows it in their R1 and R2. Have to have at least a five thousand square foot lot, do need a permit and you need to ask your neighbors. And that's a three chicken maximum. Bay City also allows more than one hen per each ten square feet enclosure. Ten feet square feet adult hen and baby chicks with no more than twelve hens over six months of age. It looks like a cap of twelve.
Twelve, alright. So, um, commissioners, uh, as you were asked, so we had a conversation about this, preliminary conversation, uh, uh, brought this to a legislative policy committee meeting. I just kinda uh, see a comfort level with the commissioner as to how to proceed. Uh, there was some, some mixed views, some of us were more supportive of allowing uh, hen, hens, not all chickens, no roosters, hens. Um, niggling hens in, in our city, um, and the regulatory environment to, to provide for that and others uh, were on the fence. And I think others were maybe like, eh, I'm not so, so keen on this, little Larry. Um, and so staff has taken the time to review these uh, additional ordinances. We've had an opportunity to review the ordinances provided. So what is the, and I know some of us after that legislative policy committee meeting also had posted this on Facebook and done some engagement to hear our community. And I'll say the feedback I got was um, pretty, not unanimous, but pretty overwhelmingly positive and, and welcoming and receptive uh, to moving this forward. But I want to hear from you all and see what your temperature is now with moving this forward. Do we want to start um, fleshing this out, our own ordinance? Um, and which, and if so, what um, input do we wanna share with our, our planning manager as to how to create the contours and ordinance that would serve our community? Commissioner St. Clair.
So I will say I was one of them that put this on my Facebook page. Um, but I will also say that the reason why I brought this up to the legislative policy meeting was because I had constituents asking when we were gonna update the chicken policy. Um, for those at home, um, we do currently have a chicken policy. It is that you may have one pet chicken. Um, and there is no restriction on whether it is a boy chicken or a girl chicken. So if you have a rooster, that is currently allowed in our chicken policy. It's also pretty widely understood that chickens are flock animals and one chicken is a very lonely sad animal if it doesn't have any um, friends. So, but when I um, shared on my Facebook page, just asking what are, what are your thoughts about chickens in the city? Um, the, that was one of the most interacted posts that I've had on my commission page. I had um, almost complete positive feedback, there was a couple of neutral, like eh, I don't want chickens, but I don't care if my neighbors have chickens. And not one negative response, so um, I think that. And, you know, I talked about this during the legislative policy meeting, I think that um, given the cost of food these days and the fact that we are a food desert. Um, immediately after we talked about this at the legislative policy meeting, the cost of eggs went skyrocketing after that. And um, that stimulated even more questions about when are you gonna update the chicken policy? I know that not everybody is fond of the idea, I also know that we have a lot of people who are already keeping chickens in the city. If you walk around um, Nelson neighborhood or Jackson Hill with, you know, your ears open, you will hear chickens. Um, they are certainly here already, so.
They are indeed. I encountered a couple of them, my neighbor, well, on the street the other day, I was like, whoa. Um, but I know my neighbor had them at one point, um, and it was not a nuisance. Um, and it's several of them and you could hear them clucking a little bit here and there, but um, they provided eggs and helped uh, provide sustenance to his family and. I, I took a, a position that as long as uh, my neighbors aren't complaining, I wasn't gonna do a thing about it, even though I did know it was not in, in accordance with, with our city ordinance. But um, as long as it was not a nuisance or, or um, being problematic to the neighbors. It served, well, they removed the, the coop since then, they had it a couple few years and then decided they didn't wanna continue it after all, but. Um, I'm generally supportive of finding a way to allow uh, hens in our community and view it as a, as a matter of a food sovereignty and, and, and sustenance and sustainability. Particularly being in a food desert, um, and as Commissioner St. Clair indicated, having to defray costs, particularly in a, a inflationary environment. Where, yeah, for a period, eggs were insanely expensive. Those are my thoughts, but um, a few of my thoughts, you heard enough from me at our legislative policy committee meeting. So I think you know where I stand on this and, and I'm supportive of, of developing a regulatory framework for us to move forward. But it's a, it's a question of is there enough uh, consensus on the commission to develop that regulatory framework? And then getting into the details of what that regulatory framework, framework looks like. Commissioner Emery.
I'm gonna put my name tag on so you remember who I am. Um, I also put a lot of word in at our meeting, when we discussed this. I am absolutely for the ability to have chickens. I would like it to up it to six. Because if we have six and only four are laying, that's only four eggs a day, so um. Just cause you have six doesn't mean they're all gonna lay, is my point, and no roosters.
Yeah, no roosters.
No roosters. So I am for that, absolutely.
Thanks, Commissioner Emery.
I'm.
Commissioner Hood?
I'm not for the chicken. I'm just not for it.
Do you support at the minimum updating our animal ordinance to prohibit roosters and only allowing hens? So presently you can have roosters or hens.
Oh, well, I don't think we, I definitely don't think um, we should have a rooster.
Okay.
And uh, right now it's one chicken, pet chicken, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good, just with the one pet chicken.
Commissioner Ramsey or Commissioner Gorman? Thoughts?
I'll let you go first.
Thank you. Um, I support also removing uh, roosters and having, I don't know what the appropriate amount of chickens is, but I'm not going to take away chickens from people. Um, but I do, I do fear that, I don't know, I hope we can be open to adjusting as needed. My fear is just it's too many chickens and then we find out, we say four chickens and people have eight chickens and then we find out, I don't know. So, that, that's my concern, but.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman.
Who's gonna, who's gonna chicken police?
What was it?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so thank you for that segue, cause now I'm gonna take my turn. Who is gonna chicken police?
Yes.
So, I will start by saying I let them have chickens, right? And everybody in my Facebook post, cause I also engage on social media, everyone was like, sure, I don't want chickens, but let somebody else have them, I don't care. So that says to me that it's gonna be a lot like the bee thing, right? Not everybody became a beekeeper the second we said you could keep bees, not everybody's gonna have chickens. I would rather walk on my lips than have a handful of chickens in my backyard, that's all there is to it, or a penful of chickens. Um, however, I do think there's gonna need to be some mitigation of the effects, the noise, who's policing how many they have? What about rats and things or vermin that come, like, I don't know, because I'm not a farmer, cause I live in a city.
Thank you.
But I, but I also don't wanna take away someone's joy if that joy is a chicken. And if it helps with their food, I support that to a wholeheartedly because I believe in that. I also think that sometimes things shouldn't be decided by committee, Mr. Franzick, and you should have showed up with a, an ordinance, you were like, sure, here's what we think is best. Cause we just proved at the last topic, we can't have a conversation that's productive. Um, but I would support whatever the city thinks is great, I think we're gonna need to mitigate the number of chickens. I don't wanna live in Key West either where they're just running in the street or, you know, the village I grew up in in Mexico, I don't wanna look at that. So let's uh, let's do that, but yeah, let them have chickens. I would say four, not six, apologies. Apologies, cause you have little baby chickens, they grow up to be other chickens and then you have a lot of chickens.
If you don't have roosters, you don't have baby chickens.
That's true.
Because I am not a farmer, I live in the city. This is true. This is true. This is science. You're not gonna have unintended baby chicks showing up.
Okay, then, how about it?
But I, I, I think the reason why Commissioner, or not Commissioner Ramsey, the why uh, Mr. Franzick did not bring a, a fully fleshed uh, ordinance and say, here, this is what I'm recommending. Is because there wasn't a consensus of the commission to move forward, while there were a couple of us that were very strongly in favor of it, others were literally caught from our first conversation that we were gonna have chickens. And so um, um, that's why, you know, he, he brought back um, some other city ordinances to, for, for the review. We had, we had a couple few previously, but he also took the time to reach out to some of these other communities to understand um, how uh, they fared with their own ordinances. So you've seen some additional context in his communications. Um, but I, I um, not to say that I necessarily want to duplicate this city's ordinance. Um, because we're gonna want it to be uh, what works for our city, um, it's gonna differ. But I think the city of Grand Rapids has a pretty good ordinance here, uh, which is a much larger city of ours. Um, it's a much more of an urban environment than a, than a rural or semi-rural uh, environment. But um, I think they've got a pretty good ordinance here, um, that does uh, speak to four chickens or six chickens, six chickens if you have uh, the room to allow it. Right. Uh, four chickens if you have less room to allow it. Um, they also have um, you know, minimum lot sizes and maximum lot coverage and they speak to uh, having the proper materials and, and, and enclosures. So you mitigate those concerns around vermin, um, and, and pests. Um, and now the one thing I don't like about city of Grand Rapids ordinance, same thing with Mr. Franzick said earlier, is that uh, in city of Grand Rapids, any one of your neighbors can veto it. Yeah, no. Which I don't like, um, because you could have a, a neighbor that just doesn't like you. Yeah. And it's like, well, screw you, I'm not gonna let you have, uh, provide for your family in this way. I agree. So I'm not too keen on letting a, a, a neighbor veto it. Um, if we do feel that there should be, I, I, I do believe that neighbors should be noticed though, um, and, and, and welcome, so I would welcome that perhaps. Um, but I wouldn't necessarily um, support any neighbor being able to veto it. Um, but at least uh, noticing and perhaps giving an opportunity to, to weigh in. Um, I do think that um. That I don't, the other thing I don't like about the city of Grand Rapids is that it's renewed every year. Um, I think that perhaps the first year, um, you could be permitted for the first year and that's gonna be run through the planning department, you're gonna be applying for it, you're gonna have to have a site plan, you're gonna have to pay, pay a fee, so it's, well. Doesn't have to be that way, that's one way we could approach it. And that if there are no problems in that first year, um, when they renew, perhaps give them two years or three years or something, so it's not like having to do it every single year. They're gonna probationary period. Yeah, I don't, no, this is my thoughts, rather than doing it every single year, I mean, that's gonna be taxing, well, unless we only have a few people pursue chickens, but we know there are more than a few already. Um, but less taxing on, on our staff's time in terms of monitoring and enforcing a- as well, by giving them, you know, more time. Uh, similar that we do for, for rental inspections, if you pass the flying colors on the first time, you get more time uh, before you have to renew. And so if you um, are being a good uh, hen owner, um, and everything's in order and you're, it's not uh, problematic, then you'll have more time. Uh, in the subsequent renewal periods, but those are my thoughts, um, at this point, Commissioner Ramsey. The only question I would have and I do not want you to answer it now is about the numbers for five thousand uh, less than four chickens, five thousand more than six chickens, are those arbitrary? Like, is there a study, you don't have, please don't answer this.
No, I wanted to bring that up.
Is there a study that says chicken need so much feet to lead a happy life, like what does that look like?
I, I don't know about.
So, that's weird number to me, but that's because I don't know what it's about.
Well, if we are gonna allow, I don't know about that, and I think Commissioner Emery is suggesting that, that doesn't really come into play. But what we would have to look at is decreasing that minimum lot size, we have so many lots, especially around the urban center downtown. That are only three thousand, four thousand square foot, so we don't wanna eliminate them from having uh, being able to do that. So I think we need to lower that to around three thousand or whatever, I do like how Grand Rapids says you can have them at single family or duplexes, but limits multifamily. I think that could be a problem if there's four people in a house and one wants chickens. Cause they all share a backyard, so.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I do like that, but I think we would have to limit uh, the minimum size. Uh, but maybe once you get to that five thousand, maybe that's when you could have six, I don't know.
Keep the government out of my hen house, but make it work.
Thank you.
And then I like the idea of requiring a hen house and requiring a designated feeding zone, so you don't just throw the food on the lawn and attract rodents, things like that.
And keeping it in the backyard, not necessarily have a front yard coop. But yes, this is rear yard, not front yard. Yeah, and then uh, speaking of s- s- room for chickens that kinda came up, several of these ordinances do say you have to have at least ten square feet per chicken. In your backyard, so just to give you some context, that was, that was required in several of these ordinances, you had to have at least ten square feet per chicken.
Like five hundred chickens.
But it sounds like there's sufficient consensus on the commission to now task our planning department to flesh out an ordinance. Um, to be brought forward to the commission for future consideration, probably at a work session. Um, unless you feel comfortable, unless you feel confident that you can bring something to a general session that isn't gonna require a lot of reworking or tweaking, but.
Yeah, I would need to go to. I'd need to go to planning commission first, but I'd feel comfortable writing it. I'll write you the best chicken ordinance ever.
Yeah, do it, do it. I would know the first thing about it. Yeah, we absolutely cannot leave our planning commission out of this uh, equation.
I would feel.
They, they're gonna be making a recommendation to us. Alright. I have no idea what I'm laughing about either.
Alright, I'll get to it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Franzick. And if any final thoughts, questions or concerns, or if our clerks department would like to let us in on the joke.
I think I suggested a field trip, we have eighteen chickens.
Oh, okay, our deputy clerks got eighteen chickens, we can have a field trip to her house to get a, a close-up experience to them as we move forward with our ordinance.
You know, if they're not kept right, they stink.
Yeah.
The poop stinks, chicken poop stinks, chicken, they stink.
Not as bad as turkeys.
If they're not cared right, which is part of the, the requirement, it's proper care. But I will say from personal experience, so I had a coop of chickens on the one side of my house and I had dogs on the other side. The dogs were far worse than the chickens, both in terms of noise and odor. I just wanna support what Commissioner Hood is saying, his concerns are real and this is fun for a lot of us, but when you get into a, an area of town that's densely populated. If everybody has a chicken, it's gonna be a thing and we complain now about the marijuana smell. Um, uh, so again, I, I get, I'm not a farmer, I don't know, but these are real concerns and I don't want him to feel discounted because we're kind of having a poke at it, right? Because it's four chickens, who's gonna have the chickens, but it's real, so consider that.
Well, we have had issues with animals in the past and we do have an enforcement officer, just to let you know, so we have someone to cover the chickens. In the past, a long time ago, it was me, I was the goat enforcer and I had to. Enforce on two goats that were being kept in McLaughlin and they were just driving the neighbors crazy.
Oh, I know.
And we had to go through court and we won, but it took a long time. And I know goats are a different animal, but they were loud and they smelled and the neighbors hated it, so for whatever that's worth, we have delved into this before a little bit.
Goats were allowed?
No.
They were not allowed, but we still had to go through the whole court system to get rid of them.
To enforce, yeah.
Got it, got it.
Do you wanna allocate some excess tax revenues to that? I do, I want you to figure out how to make marijuana paper that. Alright, we got a couple more items on the agenda, so uh, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Manager, or thank you, uh, yeah, Mr. Franzick, planning manager.
People have confused us before.
Yeah, my husband.
Alright, we have an ARPA community grant program update from, are you leading out on this or we got uh, Mr. Pete Wills? Our strategic initiatives director, welcome, Mr. Wills.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we just wanna provide a brief update this evening. As the, as you know, but the public may not, you authorized one point six million dollars from our um, ARPA allocation that we were awarded a couple of years ago. And um, at this point, we've had a great turnout, as the ARPA community grant had closed March thirty-first. Um, we had sixty applications, which really surprised me to the value of. Um, we had sixty applications, which really surprised me to the value of, uh, seven point nine million dollars of, um, total requests. And so, I was off last week, but I, we finished inventorying, um, at least what has come in at this, at this, at this point, and so, um, I expect to be a few of them will likely be, uh, weeded out a little bit based on eligibility, um, half of, uh, just to provide you a little bit of numbers here on of those sixty applications, um, thirty-one were nonprofits across the community. Uh, we had four neighborhood associations, uh, submitted an application, and those were Jackson Hill, McLaughlin, uh, Nelson, and Sheldon Park, and, um, approximately, uh, nineteen were small businesses, and then the balance, five or six, seven, um, we still gotta do a little bit of betting to figure out whether they're small business or nonprofit at this point, so, great. The response exceeded my expectations, and certainly the need i- is great in the community, um, a lot of different ideas, since we're betting through that at this point. We do expect a little bit of a delay in some of the review of that information, uh, we have a uh, grant review committee that is comprised of the manager, um, our CNS director, Sharona Carson, and then four representatives of each of the four wards across the city, uh, we've had a little bit of trouble nailing down those particular four individuals, um, and making sure that they're all representative of the city, I expect we're gonna, uh, nail that down probably this week. Uh, I think we have maybe three out of the four members, uh, reflective of, of the wards. That pushes our, the, the review committee's timeline back a little bit, probably into May, so I would expect perhaps maybe that second meeting in May would be the point where the review committee could make recommendations to you for consideration approval of, um, of applications, so we apologize to the public on that, um, we also appreciate their deference, there were a few technical problems as they submitted applications during the month of March, so we appreciate their, their patience on that, but we do expect uh, a little bit of a delay on, um, submitting projects to you for consideration. Of those, uh, two additional entities that are part of that review committee, I remissed our advisory groups that consist of the United Way, as well as Community Foundation, to assist the, the six members, um, in that grant selection sort of process and evaluation, so there's quite a, quite a bit of information will have to be distilled down a little bit so that those, those members can make, uh, pro- informed recommendations to you, and then, um, same, same for you, so. That's, uh, in a nutshell, if Mr. Manager has any questions.
I was just gonna add, uh, one thing, so, uh, there were two entities that we're aware of that's had some technical issues, um, at the end of the grant application process, um, we did work with them, uh, to, uh, allow them to have access to the application after it had closed, to make sure they're able to submit their, um, materials, um, and then in one incident, so we actually ended up uh, getting a hard copy in because there was some technical, um, issues, but, uh, so everybody who wanted to apply, um, that, you know, reached out to us if they had technical issues, were able to apply, and we did accommodate them, so, just wanted to let that be known.
Excellent.
We had some fits and starts on the technical side, since we don't administer grants like these all, all the time, but I think we learned a lot in that process, and we got sixty applications.
Sixty?
Sixty.
Amazing, great work. Wow, yeah, that's awesome.
When, when I walked back in, did I hear you say that you're gonna take more time to review them, that just a month wasn't enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Director Wills, did you give the total grant amount applied for?
Seven point, seven point nine million in total requests.
That's awesome.
Double from what I heard like a week, or not too long, I was like, whoa, okay.
Yep.
That's quite, quite the, uh, yeah, um, alright, excellent. But I'm happy to hear of the, the neighborhood associations that applied, three of which were non-five oh one C three, so I'm glad that this commission, um, decided that we wanted to open to all of our neighborhood associations regardless of their five oh one C three status, um, and three of them avail themselves of that opportunity.
Good, but tough decisions ahead for you all.
Yeah.
It's about the kind of trouble to be in.
Yeah, oh, whoo, I mean, you all have your work cut out for you on that committee, and making the recommendations to the commission, and ultimately us, uh, being the, the final, um, deciders on how to allocate those dollars. Uh, but Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time on the program?
No.
Alright, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Wills. Alright, next up, we have, uh, the parking marina, uh, development and purchase agreement, an amendment thereof, uh, being reported out by, uh, our city manager.
Yes.
Mr. Cypherth.
Um, yeah, so. Bless you, uh, a couple of months ago, we had brought to you, um, an amendment, and the commission had asked for some changes to that amendment. Um, and just for some, uh, back history here, this was a sale that the, uh, commission approved, uh, several years ago now, uh, and this, uh, so that, that sale has occurred, um, and moved on, and this is an amendment to clarify the status of that sale and the status of, of public access uh, at this property, um, so the previous amendment, really what we were trying to do was to re- reinstate the language that existed at the time of the sale. Um, the, the, uh, feedback that I got from commissioners was that there were, um, there was some language in there that was a little squishy, um, and that, and there wasn't, uh, diagrams on what was actually going to be the access at the end of the project, um, so, uh, we took a little bit different tact, um, with this, uh, this amendment, and, uh, really just looked at it to say, this is what, um, the status will be currently, um, this is what the, this is what it'll look like during construction, and this is what it'll look like after construction. Um, so some of the things that we added in, uh, as far as public access goes, uh, is specifying that um, you know, strollers, wagons, um, and fishing in designated areas is allowed, that was not something that was detailed in the previous amendments. Um, and then with those attachments to it, looking at what that actual layout looks like, um, and in the attachment, uh, let me pull up mine here, um, the, so Exhibit A attachment, uh, has areas in pink uh, that outline where the, the public access will be, there would be, um, an access, oh, you have a question?
Uh, Madam Clerk, could you get that map on the screen for us, please?
I was just working on that.
Alright, thank you.
Um, so, the, uh, the drive, for lack of a better term, or pathway along the west, southwest side of the property, uh, would be accessed out, and there would be a, a, a public fishing pier, or the option to put one of those in at that location. Uh, and then the, the pier that currently exists, uh, the access would be along, um, would be along the Terrace Point Marina, um, boardwalk, uh, and then out along the west side of the marina and onto the peninsula as, um, as it exists today, uh, we also looked at, uh, there was questions about the designated um, handicapped or accessible parking, those spots would be, um, directly to the south of the clubhouse, uh, to the, uh, to the marina, and you can actually access, uh, through the marina right onto the boardwalk at that point. Um, so the diagram that's up on the screen right now, uh, you can see in the, the blue, uh, square, uh, it looks like one square on the screen here, those are three, uh, handicapped spot, parking spots, that's directly south of the clubhouse, which you have an access point in through there, uh, you could also access it, um, closer to the lake house, um, in those parking areas as well, um, or off of, um, off of the road going back to, um, Terrace Point, uh, so there's, uh, so this is what it would look like after the fact, the current um, access, uh, is, there's a small parking lot, uh, just behind the pool, um, at Terrace Point, and then access through the sidewalk out to, um, out to the marina, or out to the, sorry, the pier. In addition, uh, this also notes that, uh, Parkland Properties, uh, you know, would invest a total of two hundred fifty thousand dollars into, um, public amenities, uh, along the, along the development, um, and that they would, uh, do it, you know, at least a two million dollar minimum of two million dollars' worth of improvements to the property, um, and that's where it also notes the two hundred fifty thousand, uh, would be accessible to the general public, um, provide for the use of privately owned real estate, um, will allow the city, county, and local uh, school systems to capture, um, dollars, so this investment, right now, this property, uh, has minimal taxable value because it's a parking lot, um, it's now privately owned, um, by having a building on there that does increase the taxable value to the property, which will go to those different entities that I just, uh, noted. Um, so that's the, the agreement in a nutshell, like I said, the objective was to make it clear uh, what the current state of the access is, which is what it's been for thirty years, twenty-five years, something like that. Um, and then what it'll look like after, uh, Parkland does its uh, proposed development, um, and that, those were the two big, the big questions I had, or that were brought to me, um. The, during the construction, it does specify that, uh, Parkland can, uh, restrict the public access for a thirty day period of the construction, which it thinks is sufficient, but if it isn't, they can come to the city and ask for that to be extended, but it have, would have to be with our permission, um, so it does give us some, some flexibility there. Uh, so, what questions do you have for me?
Commissioners, Commissioner St. Clair.
Uh, can you speak on what sort of amenities that was it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be covering? I don't see that in here.
Um, let's see, so, that's under, uh, C one, public access, um, this may include, but is not limited to improvements to the boardwalk, um, construction of a new means for public access, um, described in paragraph two below, so that's the, um, the other access area along the southwest. Um, it does talk about the gas dock and community shopper docks as well, um, so there, and it would maintain the option to put, uh, an additional fishing pier, right now, the fishing pier is a little more into the land, but there would be the option to go out a little bit, um, as well, so.
So, help me understand how the gas dock is a public amenity.
Uh, it's, it's a amenity for anybody that's on the lake, any member of the general public, you don't have to be, um, part of Terrace Point to use that. Um, so currently there are, are no gas docks on the east side of the lake, that I'm aware of, so.
So that could in.
Do you have any follow-up, Commissioner, uh, St. Clair?
No, not right now.
Alright, Commissioner Ramsey?
No, it was an internal monologue about it, encouraging people to use there and then dock and go up into the.
Yes.
It was all supposed to be in here.
Shopper dock.
Yeah.
Shopper docks.
Yeah, well, assuming the general boating public to use the shopper dock and come into our downtown, um, and then have an option to refuel.
I was responding to Rebecca in my head that, yeah, I guess that would be an amenity, right? Cause it would, so, sorry, doesn't matter.
I had the exact same question, I was like, how is a gas dock a public, okay.
Now, now, in, in general, a gas dock, you, you're not gonna park at the gas dock, you're going to gas up, and then you would go to the shopper dock or something like that, they wouldn't be the, the same slip, um, but yeah, so gas docks usually pull up, get your fuel and move on. And we do have, um, Mr. Rooks here, if there's questions for him, um, Sawyer's also here, uh, he helped work on this as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for our city manager before, um, first off, do you have any questions at this time for our city manager? If none, oh, Commissioner Emery.
Well, I, yeah, I think you would know it, so, these, the, where the pink is, that's all public access?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, so that would be part of, yeah, the, um, yes, that's yes.
I just wanna clarify, thank you.
Yep.
Current or proposed?
So, in, um, attachment, the attachment A, which has the two purple areas, that is after the development is, is completed, um, the, the current one is just as it is right now, and it outlines the sidewalk.
Yeah, so similar to the, uh, amendment that was brought forward a couple of months ago, um, this amendment immediately, uh, continues or restores the X P X dedication, public access, with additional caveat that you can, um, bring strollers or wagons on there, on that waterfront walkway, because the original X P X dedication, um, from a few decades ago expressly prohibits anything with wheels except for wheelchairs, um, so it's, uh, allowing additional ways to, to access that property, and so that, um, access is, is, would be restored, um, immediately, although it's never really de facto been taken away.
Right.
Cause the current property owner has not, uh, prohibited people from accessing it, uh, but this is just, uh, codifying, uh, present conditions, um, for that public access, and then after the construction is done, what's seen on the map in that purplish pink is how public access, um, and that's to be further codified, um, by, um, public instrument, but that's how that public access would be, um, provided, so not only would the waterfront walkway be accessible, but there'd be that additional um, ingress, egress to the waterfront, um, and that, that, um, fishing pier, and then the shopper dock, although as the city manager said, mentioned, um, and that, that fishing pier could potentially be expanded further, which I would welcome, um, but, Commissioner Ramsey?
That's my only thing, I would like to see a bigger fishing pier, I think that it, that is going to be a huge selling point for our neighbors, and it's what they're going to complain about now, and, um, so, I think that that will help to mitigate some of those concerns, and it, it's, it's great amenity, and, uh, if there's an opportunity, maybe for us to take some of these excise tax?
And build a bigger pier, go for it, fishing pier, go for it.
Oh, I'm paying for it.
Oh!
Let's not give up our money. I mean, we are so broke. Yeah, I think that this looks great, and I said the first time that we voted on this a couple of weeks back, that I, I didn't know what to do, because I felt like we didn't do the best thing the first time, and so if this is what staff and developer and neighbors are all coming together to support, and I support this as well, I'm not as well as not being a farmer, I'm also not a, an engineer, so if this is the great thing and we're having access to our, our beautiful lake shore, that's amazing, and we thank you for that. Um, when do we get to talk about putting First Street back in?
That, that. That would require some public dollars, perhaps.
Ah, that's fine, we got some money, but just one or two.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I can't remember if I said this or not, the, there was a question about temporary access before, this is, this clarifies that the, the access is not temporary. I apologize if I missed that, so.
I also wanna thank you for thinking about some of the big questions that were asked by neighbors around the ambiguity of the language, like the that you can shut down during construction, of course, because we wanna keep people safe, but if you're not a nice person, if you're not, you know, on the up and up, you can say, oh, well, here's my construction, and then shut it down for as long as you want, right? Because someone with lesser morals would do that, could do that. So thank you for addressing those areas that the neighbors specifically spoke to, um, that's a huge deal, and goes a long way.
Commissioner Garman?
Uh, thank you, I have some questions about section two and the public access, um, let's see.
C two?
Yes, uh, let's see, Parkland shall be granted the same rights, X P S, sorry, sorry, uh, okay, as well as the right to briefly limit access to the kidney-shaped concrete patio at the far end of the peninsula during summer wedding ceremonies and events for the adjacent hotel and restaurant, so, is Parkland, who is coordinating those events, that will temporarily limit public access?
Yes, and I think that's, that's how it currently exists now, I believe, so that's, that's a current state.
Do we know what, I mean, I can understand wedding ceremony, I'm just concerned about just events being a little too vague, and we find out that someone's having day-long events, I don't know, on the weekend in the summer, sorry, and this is just me being nitpicky, because that's what you voted me to do.
Absolutely, that's right, um, uh.
What does briefly mean?
Yeah, cause that is some new language.
That was, that was new to me, and then.
The previous amendment.
Um, so I, so we, we talked about that as, as it's a current state, um, and the I don't know if, if Sawyer or if Mr. Rooks wants to.
Well, let me see.
Okay.
My thinking is, obviously, we have other parks in our city that are allowed to be reserved for events and weddings, so I just wanted to know if it would be treated that way, um, and in that, we could, if our neighbors have an issue with a private event being held, we can remind them that there are opportunities for that in our other parks in the city, and this is being treated the same.
Very digestible.
So, the, yeah, so the, the reservations go through Parkland, um, go through the, I believe, the Shoreline Inn, um, and this is, uh, kind of treated like a park, but it's not, it's, it's been, um, an easement, so, um, but I, I mean, yeah, anyone to have the ability to, 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 uh, rent it. I don't think they have any, I mean, beyond the ability to have the availability and pay, I think those would be the two main criteria.
Right.
So, just like our other amenities in the city.
Right, right. I just, um, that's a little bit of a sticking point for me. And then the next, further down in that section, it's also stated, Parkland may also impose other rules approved by city staff, period. I don't know, is that referring to something? Would those be rules that staff would make the commission aware of? So we don't get caught off guard with new rules?
Yeah, I, I, I can't see, um, staff imposing rules there without communicating that to you guys, um, so, you know.
Right, I, and I, I can't see a current city staff doing that. I'm just thinking of the future of city staff that I don't know yet, or when I'm not sitting there. So those two items in that section stuck out to me.
In, in the same vein, with regard to city staff, I would welcome the designation of the city manager.
Yeah.
Not just city staff broadly or generally, but the city manager.
Yeah, cause I'm, because the city manager position is responsible to the seven of you, so whomever the manager is if they were to.
That would make me feel more comfortable.
Not do something. I see Sawyer taking notes.
Attorney's taking notes, Commissioner Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like it to say the city manager specifically as well, and then have some sort of verbiage about sharing it with the commission. Alerting or something within a certain amount of time of it being enacted or whatever that looks like, so that we don't get caught off guard in the street by someone who's gonna come and tell us something that we don't know about. You know that that has happened to many of us many times and we do not appreciate that. Um, I also have questions about the rentable park at the end of the kidney. Jonathan, who currently owns that park out there?
The, at the end of the peninsula? Um, well, currently it's owned by John, Mr. Rooks, sorry, yeah, Parkland Properties, yeah.
So it's already a private piece of property.
Correct.
So we're not taking anything away.
Correct.
Nothing is changing. This is already a private piece of property that we can't just, I can't just go out there and set up camp there and be like, well, I'm here now, cause it's a private piece of property. So all we're doing is putting guidelines around it so that everybody has the best use of the lakefront, uh, regardless of how they're engaged.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Any additional questions for Commissioner St. Clair?
Thank you. Um, looking at the diagram again, I am noticing that the public access transient mooring is not purple. Why is that not purple?
Good question. Hold on, can we get clarity on that? Um, perhaps if the, that's a question for the developer.
Yeah.
Um, as to why our, cause the shopping dock ostensibly is publicly accessible.
Purple.
So, um, is that just an oversight that our, the shopping dock is not, uh, colored purple to reflect public access?
It's the most, uh, westerly finger coming off. I don't know if you can zoom in.
The L-shaped shopper dock, yeah.
The new.
Oh, yeah.
Public amenity.
It's a new public, it, well, it specifies public access.
But it's not purple, why isn't it purple?
So it's, in language, it says public access and transient mooring on wave attenuator. So the language is in there, but it's just not colored purple. So it'd be nice to have those two, uh, aligned.
Yeah, you're, welcome to, uh, come to the podium.
Get up here, out of their way.
Identify yourself and the organization that you represent.
I'm John Rooks, uh, I own Parkland Properties and the Shoreline Inn and this marina. Um, the, the question that just was on the table about that dock is we don't have that shopper dock, um, financing, uh, mechanism figured out yet. And we also don't have the final permits from the D E Q and the Army Corps of Engineers. So we put the, the purple lines on everything that we own now. And because that dock doesn't exist, we didn't wanna put a purple line on it at this point. But we do intend to try to use a, um, a strategy to get a shopper's dock grant or a shopper's dock funding mechanism through the state and then come back to you and propose that. And, um, and that helps our project move forward as well. Um, as far as the wedding peninsula thing that we just talked about, that, that used to be a s- a series of dead bushes when I bought the property and it had a very narrow sidewalk surrounding it. So I pulled all the bushes out and, um, filled it with concrete and made a patio out of it. But that's the only part that would be reserved for weddings, not, none of the purple area. It would just be that bulb out at the end.
You.
And then I think you had a question about.
That then begs, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Rooks, but then that begs the, the question as well, cause Commissioner St. Clair just pointed out the shopper dock's not purple. I noticed the kidney shape's not purple either. So we understand that it may briefly, per this amendment, briefly be encumbered by a special event during the summer months.
I think we should make it purple.
But it's not purple presently. So is this meant to be purple?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll change that.
Okay.
And then, and then the, um, question about the staff being able to, um, tell us that we have additional rules that we have to implement, we, we're thinking in the sense of like, you might say, we're not allowed to do camping. Well, we don't want camping there anyway, but if you impose a rule that we can't camp out there, if people can't pitch tents, that's, that's what we were thinking. That was more for your protection.
Yeah.
Not ours.
Gotcha. Um, while you're up there, uh, Mr. Rooks, can you, um, either zoom out or move down, move the screen down a little bit?
All right. So, um, no, we're good. We don't need to keep on scrolling. Um, so what I'm wondering, obviously you're gonna have, uh, boat storage in and out service, so you're gonna have some traffic coming between those two public access points. Will there be a way to allow people to cross that when you don't have boat traffic, when it is safe and under, and interrupted condition? So someone can, uh, go from the southerly concrete sidewalk to get to the marina and the waterfront walkway without having to go all the way around. Will there be a, um, a short connection point during appropriate times? Cause obviously you're not gonna be doing in and outs, uh, service all day long, every single day.
Correct.
So will there be a way for folks to get from one access point to the other access point in the shortest, uh, manner possible?
Yeah, I just, I think ju- it just naturally it's gonna happen anyway, um, but we would certainly allow people to cross there almost un, un, unfettered way.
Okay.
They can just cross when they need to cross. And then, you know, just to point out, now that you got the diagram moved down a little bit, you can see the, the boardwalk, that existing boardwalk, that's not public access at all right now. And so that's gonna be additional public access that we add. In addition to the other side, so. And we've always had the right to relocate the public access. And it's, it's been that way since nineteen eighty-nine, way before I bought the property.
Yeah, the ingress, egress, you had the discretion to relocate it at your.
Yep.
Yeah, your will, um, for the original dedication. Commissioner Ramsey. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanna celebrate you asking about the, um, hopper access from one purple to the other purple, but I think that unless we can really nail something down that says, because obviously you're gonna run a business through there, right? And for safe few reasons, I think that is, unless we can nail something that's concrete and put it into language, that we shouldn't try to do that because it doesn't set Mr. Rooks up for success to be accountable to that system. And then it also gives our neighbors uninflated understanding of what could happen. And I would rather it just be very, like, on the nose, this is what we know to be fact. So while I think it's great that Mr. Rooks is going to, is saying like, sure, they're gonna be able to walk across when people aren't moving boats through there. I don't want that to be something that the community reads as theirs and then gets mad when it's not. You know what I mean? Um, so I hope that that, that didn't come out as eloquently as I wanted it to, but I think that we only need to put things in print that we know to be for certain.
Well, and if, if you don't mind, can I speak to that again?
Yeah.
So I don't know, but why anybody would take the path that we're talking about, because it'd be so much nicer and it's so much more enjoyable to walk next to the marina. Everybody wants to walk next to the water. So I think most people would just take the boardwalk from the lake houses and, and I don't know why they would wanna go to the other side, but we put it in both spots just because we could.
Yep, and I don't either, but I know that the second we say that we can, we are, we have then created a system of accountability that we have to be accountable for. Right? It's in the title. So I don't wanna put it in there if it's not something that we know can be used all the time, because people will be upset. This circumvents it. So it's, nothing wrong, there's nobody's fault.
Indeed. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Rooks at this time? Commissioner St. Clair.
So back to the shopper docks, at this point, this is just a proposal that may or may not happen depending on whether funding can be secured.
The shopper dock component of it, that meaning.
The, the part that isn't in the purple currently, that, that is.
We wanna build it and we need permits to build it.
Okay.
And we, um, have applied for the permits and we haven't gotten negative feedback from either Eagle or Army Corps of Engineers. And, um, you know, I think the, the goal is to do what we've done with all our other projects over the last fifteen years, just to make them as nice and, and high end and, uh, perform as well as it possibly can. And, uh, we, uh, have, eh, eh, this is all designed by engineers. We've got over a hundred thousand dollars in, into these plans so far. Um, and the, um, the, at the end of the day, there's no shopper's dock there now. We're just trying to add something that makes it even better. And that's part of what this project brings to the city.
Yeah, shopper docks would be welcome. That's for sure. So you would not anticipate coming to the city for approval of site plan? And the, until after you've received the, the permits?
Correct.
Okay, so that's when, that, that site plan approval is where we're going to be further codifying, um, the public access.
When, when, when we originally did this deal, um, two years ago, we, we always had agreed to maintain public access. We just, we weren't far enough along, we didn't have a site plan to present to you, to attach to an agreement. So now that we have gone through the permit process and worked with our engineers, we have a plan that we can attach to the agreement and, and to do that, we needed to do this amendment. But we always had talked about, you know, preserving the public access. The lawsuit didn't change that at all, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and you haven't taken away public access to the waterfront walkway since, since you've owned it either. Um, it's reflected in, in your actions.
Correct.
Um, so, um, and I, I appreciate the, the change from the X P X dedication to, to allow, uh, wagons and strollers to be able to access that, as well as the designated fishing area. What I'm wondering is, can we also then add, um, what concerns you might have, uh, about allowing bikes? You know, I could see someone wanting to bike down that concrete sidewalk to get to the fishing pier. Oftentimes I see people in our community biking with a fishing pole and a bucket, um, to get to the lake, so, um, you know, what concerns, if any, do you have allow, about additionally allowing, um, bicycles to be able to use that ingress, egress, uh, to get to that, that, that fishing pier then?
You're just referring to the, the bottom of the picture, not the boardwalk along the marina, right?
Yes, specifically.
Cause we wouldn't want bikes on the marina. Boardwalk. But I, I think it's a good idea. I think that'd be a great bike path.
Okay. Commissioner Ramsey, does that say that it's five feet wide?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, you remember when we got out here and told all these people how to build a bike path out of the lake, holding hands with the tape measure? Is that enough, is that wide enough to get a bike and a person down? I'm not, that sounds judgy. I'm worried about safety.
Yeah.
So like I, from a neighbor aspect, like if I'm trying to walk with my stroller and Jonathan comes by with his fishing pole and a bike, five foot isn't enough space. So just think about the safety aspect before we again commit to things that we don't know, well, you know.
Well, you could make it exclusively bike if you wanted. And then, and then the pedestrian access could be on the marina side.
Or ten feet wide.
Yeah, that's a little tougher to do. So.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I certainly understand the concern.
Yeah.
Um, you certainly wanted to be safe. I wouldn't expect that we're going to have such high bicycle traffic that it's going to be overly problematic in that regard.
Well, there's some work for, for them to go at the end.
Um.
Just a concern.
And if we could expand it, it'd be great, like, but, you know, this obviously was designed, a lot of, a lot of effort, money went into it as it is, um, but you know, maybe there's opportunity to, to expand it. I don't know what, you know, I don't know the intricacies of your, your development and your project here, um, but I don't think that's a bad idea, if it could be.
But we could also stripe, put a stripe down the middle and then have one side for pedestrians and one side for bikes.
Yep, I was just raising the concern of safety, that's all. I wasn't asking for any extra, um.
Hey, where are you asking for ten feet?
I know.
It's true.
But it is a dead end, so it's not, I just, these are things, you know.
Yeah, it's not a continuous bike path.
Yeah.
It is an ingress, egress, primarily servicing pedestrians, but then allowing, I just don't want a prohibition on bikes, uh, to be able to, to get there, that's all. And I don't think, you know, but this goes back to your point, uh, Commissioner Ramsey, about accountability, because I don't think that'd be, he would be prohibiting, if, if we didn't have language allowing bikes, I don't think he'd be going out there saying, you can't have bikes out here.
Right, no.
However, um, it's nice to have.
The language in place, so that we know what we have subscribed to and what we're accountable for. And all that means is that we get to be honest through the whole process.
Yeah, um, and I certainly welcome the, the handicap parking being in, uh, being put there on, in close proximity to that waterfront walkway. But, uh, did you have something to add, Mr. Rooks?
Well, I was just looking at the, um, at, at C two, um, on page two, um, you know, and how it talks about strollers and wagons and fishing, um, in designated areas, um, if, if it was to say biking designated areas, then that works it in there, but then allows, um, for that to be where appropriate, um, so, but, but it, yeah, the, the, a standard bike path would be ten feet wide, so, um, that's. And this.
It's a property to the sale.
We'll be back at site plan, you know, we'd be in front of the planning commission and then in front of you as we go through the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, and further, further.
I'll talk to the engineers about the design and see.
Okay, um, I know we've talked about it in the past too. It don't necessarily say it clearly defined here, maybe it doesn't need to be defined here, cause it's more the road than, rather than the, the property in question, but that's about adding a sidewalk and having a continuous sidewalk, connecting the sidewalk. Cause the sidewalk right now stops, you know, at your hotel and then it's, there's no sidewalk and it continues again once you get on the other side of the restaurant, um, over at the, uh, X P X building, um, and then continuing Terrace Point Landing. So it'd be nice to have a continuous sidewalk. And so if you, when you are bringing a site plan to us, um, to the planning commission and city commission, um, that it would be nice to uh, have that reflected in any reconfiguration of the road that we do, that has that in mind as well. So I just wanted to revisit that or, you know, make, keep that in mind of, of having that, uh, continuous and connected sidewalk there.
It's been a goal of ours anyway, um, we were possibly gonna try to joint fund that with the shopper stock application when we, when we work on a grant. Um, we paid for half of the sidewalk that went from the Shoreline Inn to Third Street, cause it bugged us so much that it didn't have a sidewalk, so. That one went in like five years ago.
Yeah, yeah, you were a key reason why that, that sidewalk went in, yeah.
I don't know why.
Our key supporter.
I don't know why they missed the sidewalks.
And partner of that. Which we certainly appreciate, um. All right, just scrolling through, see if there's anything else that I have. Questions about myself, but, um, I think that's it, um. But no, I, I appreciate the, the revisions to this. I welcome the greater detail, the, the, the visual, that's really helpful, cause not everyone, when they read through the amendment, um, even though the amendment, the last amendment reflected this, you didn't necessarily know it until you saw it. Um, and so it's really helpful to have that visual, um, as well, yeah, that diagram, so. Um, and I like, yeah, some of the greater detail.
And frankly, we were, we weren't prepared the last time we put the amendment in front of you to attach this, cause it wasn't done yet, so now it's done and I think it works really well.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Rooks? Any final questions? No? Any final questions for the manager? Any final thoughts to share with the manager or our legal counsel or, uh, the counterparty to this agreement? Nope. Mr. Manager, do you have anything outstanding that you wish to hear from the commission as we proceed?
Uh, no, uh, so the, the proposed process with this is, uh, to bring it back to you at our next, uh, well, not our next meeting, at our meeting on the twenty-fifth, um, uh, for final passage and approval, um, so I just wanted you guys to be able to talk about it. Uh, that was the other bit of, bit of feedback that I received after the last time we brought this was to give you guys some time to, to process it. Um, so that's the objective of this, so.
Okay, excellent. Well, I, I welcome the preservation of public access and the expansion of public access and the enhancement of public access. So, thank you for your work on this and thank you to the developer and our legal counsel for working through this. So if there's nothing else, then I shall move on to public comment. Uh, we are gonna go into public comment. If you want to give public comment, our forms is back at the room. Ask that you provide your name. If you want to give public comment, our forms at the back of the room ask that you provide your name and address on the public comment form. I will not share your address publicly. Um, our rules do require a collection of, of, um, that information though. And if there's a drop box at the back of the room. So if you, um, have not filled out a public comment form and you wish to speak, uh, please complete that form and leave it in that drop box. And we shall start with Leah Markowski joining us from the Nelson neighborhood. You have up to, uh, we do not have, um, we only do three minutes, uh, Ms. Markowski. So, so yeah, the, the rules of the commission have changed and we, um, give everyone three minutes. There's no, uh.
I mean, I would like to speak on the parkland issue, but I also have unrelated issues. So I was not aware of that. I don't know if we can do two, three minutes because they're very unrelated.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
You are also, uh, just if you're not able to get through what you want to share tonight, you're one, welcome to come back tomorrow and give public comment again. And if you're not able to be here physically tomorrow, we do allow public comment by phone. Um, so you can, uh, phone in your public comments as well. And if it is, happens to be an agenda item tomorrow, you can give your public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And anything that's not on the agenda, provide additional public comment at the end of the meeting. So.
Okay. We'll see what we can do. Thank you. From the Muskegon Lake watershed partnerships perspective, um, we have a few items of concern regarding this proposal. Um, the original dedication was to provide public space, um, in its entirety of the peninsula, basically in perpetuity. And so there was discussion of the end of the peninsula being private property. It was always intended to be, um, accessible to the public without the ability to reserve it in the future for special events. So that's one example where that's kind of different from the original declaration where we're allowing it to be taken over sometimes by a private entity that's counterintuitive to the declaration in our opinion. Um, but there's a few other things. In the amendment, it says that he may include, um, $250,000 worth of improvements, but not must. So if they don't, how does that affect the amendment? Um, it only says that he may, but not that he must. It is our perspective that we need to create a corridor from downtown to the waterfront, as I think most of you would agree. Um, we're not sure if this completely accomplishes that purpose because shown in the, um, overhead, there is a gap where you can go down one end on the left or you can go down one end on the right. But if there is boat traffic, middle of the day, most of the days, most of the summer, you may be impeded from having that contiguous, um, transit through the property. So that is of concern. Uh, you mentioned bikes and obviously we have a bike trail coming along Shoreline Drive from both directions. Bikes are going to want to go wherever they can go. So I think it's great for bikes to be able to go places, but unless you say they can't, they're going to assume that they can. They're going to want to explore and see what's on the shoreline. What can I see? What can I do? You have a overhead view of this property. I strongly encourage you to request from your developers in the future, anything involving the public to have elevation views. What does it look like from our perspective when we are walking down the street or driving down the street? It's hard to make decisions from a community perspective with only a, a Google map view of the world instead of what will we see and encounter and experience? And elevation views will allow you to accomplish that much more clearly. Um, I believe that any dedication, any change from the original dedication should include a public hearing. I understand that there are permits currently being requested. Um, and so we would expect that as we have created this environment of discussion, that a public hearing would be held if there's any change from that original use and so that all the citizens can participate. It seems that there are some overlays of riparian zones from this new shopper dock to the adjacent property to the left. Um, and those uses might conflict in the future. Uh, there's a reduction of green space with this new development versus what is currently accessible now. And it's just in general, our assumption that the highest and best use of this property is to create a contiguous flow along the waterfront and with collaboration between developers and the city and residents to create a space that does not feel chopped up. It does not feel like you have to walk around corners and dodge behind things that views are impeded. View sheds are very important and they create social and economic value to everyone in the community, not only the people who are living on the.
We appreciate you joining us this, this evening and sharing your perspective. And welcome back to the city of Muskegon. All right. Uh, next up, we have a Howard, uh, Travers?
Trevor.
Travers. All right, welcome from Jackson Hill neighborhood. You have up to three minutes to provide your remarks.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. So I gave Rooks $67,000 for our beautiful property. Uh, I live in Terrace Point Landing and I don't know if you guys walked around where this, uh, shameful project is going to be, but it is a beautiful piece of property. I walk my dog there all the time. By the way, John, there's, you've got bikes on there, so bikes, but it's not big enough for a big bike trail. It's a beautiful property. Now, let me backtrack. I've only been here a year, so if I'm overstepping my bounds, that's, that's, uh, we moved up here full-time and, uh, a year ago. And so we live in Terrace Point. Uh, I think this whole project is shameful on a basic level. On the worst level, it's pure corruption. Oh yeah, you jacked up the price from two to what, 25,000? 25,000 is a pittance for, for John. It's just so you look better in the press. It's, and it's a beautiful piece of property. Why don't you get, why don't you use it for tourism? You want to change the city from industrial base to tourism. You get this beautiful piece of property and what do you do? You put a smelly boat storage thing in there. It's just unconscionable. I walk my dog there. I know that property inside out, even though I've just been here a year. And I just encourage the commissioners to vote this baby down and think out of the box. First of all, I didn't know that you could have access there. I kind of walked through there thinking that the hotel owns everything. Uh, I think that this is a terrible, terrible project and it needs to be, go away. Uh, John did a great job in our Terrace Point Landing. It's a beautiful, uh, area. He, he does great, he does great work. This project is not great work. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Travers. Appreciate you joining us tonight. Uh, if you care to stick around, I would love to speak with you further. All right, next up we have, uh, Wanda Matzie. Did I say that right? Joining us from the Nelson neighborhood? Welcome. You have up to three minutes to provide your remarks.
Okay, don't start until I get up here.
Oh no, we won't start until your, your first word is uttered.
Um, Muskegon Marijuana dispensaries. I live on Fourth Street. It's too many of them. They're becoming our squawk in the neighborhood. I think you need to put a, a limit on the dispensaries in the neighborhood or put them in your neighborhood where you live. Put them in your neighborhood where you live, yours, yours and yours. Open them up in your neighborhoods. Stop putting them down Muskegon on Laketon. My friends and family come in Muskegon, you know what they say? Oh, you've got all these dispensaries in your neighborhood. I can tell because the majority of them are blue and black. I never realized that. And you know what else is happening? It's not about the crime, but it's becoming a nuisance in the area because of the disorderly conduct, the lottery and the neighborhood with the dispensaries in them is getting to be terrible. I don't know if you've ever noticed it? No, because you don't live there, but I have. I've lived there for over 30 something years. I want people to come into Muskegon and say, oh, I love where you live. What they used to say, now they're noticing all the dispensaries in the neighborhood. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you, Ms. Matzie. Appreciate you joining us this evening. I would, if you, if you wish to stick around. All right. Next up, we have, uh, Max McKee, joining us from the city of Grand Haven by way of the Mart Dock downtown.
He just walked out. Okay.
All right, we will go to the phones. Oh, he's coming down the hall? Well, it's a great time to let folks at home who are watching that we do have public comment by phone. So be prepared to phone in. This is our final, uh, form, uh, to speak. So anyone home, be prepared to call in. Uh, Mr. McKee, you have up to three minutes to provide your remarks.
Thank you. Good, good place for chickens out there, I think. So, um, I, I encourage, uh, the commissioners and, and everyone to look at the big picture here, um, how this project affects all the other projects that we're, are going to happen along the lake in the shoreline and, and the connection to the rest of the community. Because we have talked about connection to the rest of the community. This project doesn't do that. It has many other problems. I'm not going to go into each one of them. It would take me much longer than three minutes. I will say this before, uh, this, uh, three minutes ends. I've asked for a meeting to sit down with commissioners, staff, attorneys, uh, and Parkland. That's what we need. And I've asked for that for a long time and it hasn't been granted. So hopefully before this is in front of the commissioners again, you will request that that happens where we sit down and we discuss this. I want to just address a couple of things here. Commissioner Ramsey, the fishing pier, uh, as proposed, has a five-foot pathway uh, that is hundreds of feet from where someone would park. And the fishing pier itself, as depicted, is half the size of a standard bathroom and you would cast into three feet of water. That's where it's located in this picture, three feet of water for a fishing pier. And that's where your cast would go. I know because we're the adjacent landowner. So this whole amendment, uh, the previous one was referred to as squishy. Uh, this is, this is, um, and I'll be delicate, uh, by saying it's squishy here. And I'd use another adjective, um, if I were to be indelicate. It's more than squishy. And I, that's why I need the meeting. That's why we need the meeting and, and have the attorneys present. The, uh, it's very interesting where the operation with the boats and the, um, forklifts are going to happen. If you read it carefully, and that's what needs to be done, this needs to be read carefully, read carefully. If you read it carefully, Mr. Rooks basically has the opportunity to stop anybody from going across if he deems that it could be a hazard. Okay? And the city's not going to, um, prevent him from doing that because if they prevent him from doing that, the city then can be on the hook for saying, wait a minute, he wanted to stop those people from going across, but city, you said they couldn't and you'll be on the hook. You'll be liable. It's worded so trickly, it, it's, it's in ambiguously. This needs to be looked at. This project, uh, as, as many have said, is a bad one. And I hope you guys will have that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Appreciate you joining us tonight. All right, anyone else in the audience wishes to give public comment at this time before we go to the phones? All right, anyone on the phones?
No mayor, there's none.
Nope?
No.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn and we will be back here tomorrow evening for our general session. We have a motion by Commissioner Emery, supported by Commissioner St. Clair to adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you. Take care. Be well.